Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Swan County Commissioner meeting for February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. We'll do the invocation and the pledge, and Commissioner Fleming, can I get you to do that?
Sure. Dear Father, we come once again in the name, thank you for the hidden blessings, if you will still pardon us, thank you for a portion of light, health, and strength, thank you for those that were sick and the Father brought them back. You are the bereft founder today, I know that you're able to do all things yourself, failing, I know that you can make a way out of nowhere. Now blessed tonight in our meeting, God give us strength, and these commissioners, and help us to be on board to do what's right in our community, in our county, to go to the department heads, and Father, we thank you for our citizens and the community that have come out to show support for that. Father, we ask these and all blessings, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Our pledge is to be the fire of the United States of America, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item of the approval of minutes for the February first, twenty twenty-two regular board meeting, do I have any discussion or motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman. On pace three seventy, I read through that really quick, we need to make one change, that top of Commissioner Land approved to approve a tactical term of fire for ninety-five-hundred, not ninety-five thousand. Other than that, type of.
Seems legit.
expend or somewhere. One change in our second commissioner.
That's a motion by Commissioner Fleming, a second by Commissioner Land, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same side, motion carried. Only consent, is there everybody good, or I'm going to pull out of number seven for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, can I just clear it up real quick?
Sure.
This is really just an authorization to advertise the intent to make this a senior management position, then it's advertised for two weeks and then it'll come back to board. So that's what that actually is, it's just an authorization to advertise.
Does anybody have any other questions?
That's the additional agenda, that's additional.
Done the back end forward. So only to say as we go, items two through ten, I'm sorry, two through nine, eight, all in favor, aye?
We have a motion and a second.
Do I have a motion? Offered. Motion by Commissioner Stapleton, second by Commissioner Fleming, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Tonight, we have invited these folks over, I met them in Tallahassee when we were rural county days, and was interested in what they had to say and what they had to offer, and it's Thomas Howell Ferguson, P.A., and Mr. Steve Stevens is going to give us a presentation on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I said, I'm here with Nicole, Brittany Vettel, from the firm, and Nicole is handing out some of the, what I call a cheat sheet, a slip sheet of some of the services that we provide, and I'd like to thank you all for, I know the time is super valuable, thanks for seeing us. Again, my name is Steve Stevens, I am with the firm, I'm a director with the firm, and I am a CPA, but our firm not only performs CPA work, but a lot of government consulting work, and our government consulting work consists of certain specific areas right now, including CARES Act, ARPA, which is the American Rescue Plan Act, what I call ERAP, the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, one and two, and we also do a whole lot of work, working with the Florida Division of Emergency Management and the FEMA reimbursement public assistance process. And, you know, one of the things I want to touch on, and I'll be very, very brief and concise, number one, we want to compete for your business. I'm here, I do want to work for you, want to work for the county, county commission, county administrator, but I will not tell you, you know, I'd love to tell you that you could hire us right now, but that would be a bad thing for both of us, but I do want to compete for your business. So again, thank you for your time. What I'd like to, what I think is super important right now, is this is a very unusual opportunity for every local government in the United States. There's so much money flowing from not only U.S. Treasury, but a lot of the other U.S. Departments and agencies to local governments, you know, that include everything from CDVG funds to HUD, other HUD funds, disaster recovery funds, mitigation funds, but also the ARPA funds, CARES Act, and N two, and we're into probably ERAP two, but following that is going to be broadband money that's going to flow through the state of Florida, and then the infrastructure funds that are going to come from the federal government, probably through the state of Florida, to local governments. And it's an incredible, just an incredible opportunity for local governments to invest in their area for their constituents for the next fifty years. I mean, it's a huge, just a huge, huge investment opportunity. So whether we have the opportunity to work with you or not, please don't leave any money on the table. I tell all my clients that, I tell all my potential clients that, please review the funds, I know that you are, and I think one of the, one of the most important things to realize from these funds is there, there's some overlap. And what I mean by that is, I mentioned broadband money coming out through the state of Florida. So within ARPA, in the original interim final rule, they had mentioned broadband, water in sewer, loss revenue, and then in addition to that, some of the public safety areas. Once the final rule came out, one of the cool things that happened is, well, first of all, the interim final rule was about a half inch thick. This is the final rule, so I read it, you see my little yellow stick. So what they did with the final rule, they said, okay, that was pretty large, probably an attorney could read it, I don't know about a CPA. So they gave us an overview of the final rule, and then they gave us a project and expenditure report user guide to help guide us. But what is super, super important here is to understand all of these different revenue streams, and what this final rule did is it gave us the opportunity to take a standard allowance of ten million dollars and not have to calculate revenue loss. Now, I'm just a CPA, and our firm is a CPA firm, we're used to looking at revenues, okay? That revenue loss calculation is a pain, and I performed it for several entities prior to the final rule coming out. So this ten million dollar opportunity to just say, hey, we'll take this as a loss, move it into the general fund, and it allows us to use these funds for what we deem as an appropriate use of public funds. So now, you're not, you don't have to focus on, say, the broadband area, and I use broadband as an example, because if you ask me, I would tell you, and my recommendation would be, hey, don't spend these, this ten million, eight million dollars on broadband, because right behind this money, DEO from the state of Florida has broadband money coming to you. So maximize the use of these funds, know your revenue streams, and put them, put those revenue streams to your priority projects, so that that investment in Swan County is the best investment that you can make. And I'll give you an example of how we've assisted clients in maximizing these revenue streams. One of these examples is Nassau County. Now, we've done a lot of work for Nassau County, and we've worked as a subcontractor with a company called GSG, Government Services Group, very good company, and we appreciate the referral work that we receive from them, and I hope they also enjoy the referral work that we give to them. But they called us and said, hey, can you take a look at this? Oh, yes, sir. So what Nassau had done originally is planned their CARES Act expenditure, and they had pushed them out to some of the businesses, individuals, nonprofits, to spend those funds, and it was all unappropriate use. So for the deadlines, where are they going to meet the deadlines for the expenditure of these funds? No. So they said, okay, still inappropriate use, we're good, but instead of CARES Act funding that, we're going to use CARES Act to fund the expenditures we have for public safety, including the sheriff's office. We're going to submit that, make sure we're cool with the feds, with the eligibility of those funds. So they did that. Now that those funds are clean, so they can continue assisting these other nonprofits, individuals, and businesses. And that's because they had adequate documentation to cover that CARES Act grant, coming from public safety, sheriff's office, N, emergency management, and so forth. So in so doing, they didn't, Nassau County did not pursue a COVID-19 public assistance agreement, and this is where I'm coming from with revenue streams. That's a potential other revenue stream. So obviously Nassau County, just like Swanee and every other county, spent money on personal protective equipment, screens for serving your customers, cleaning, sanitizing buildings, additional emergency management salaries after the cutoff date for CARES that are eligible. So the example I'm giving you is Nassau County said, hey, we did not do this, can you help us? GSG called us, said help them. So Nassau County has the potential to get, to be reimbursed through the federal government from public assistance under FEMA, about eighty dollars. And that's a little over. And I say the possibility, because some of those costs could be disallowed. So what we communicated with the county administration is, you know, we provided narrative, we put this information together, FEMA could disallow some of these costs, maybe up to two million, but you still receive three million dollars. And in addition to that, our time, our billing to you is also reimbursable, because under COVID-19 PA, it's a hundred percent reimbursable, it's a CAT-Z project worksheet, we put those, that information in there and file it, FEMA obligates it, goes to the Division of Emergency Management, and it gets paid. So not only did they get reimburse those costs, they covered the cost of the contractor coming in. That's important, it's key, it's giant, it's the way to maximize your revenue streams and really capitalize on this revenue coming in and the investment you can make in your community. One of the other examples I have, we were very fortunate, it was a great project, to work with Sarasota County on their CARES Act funds, and the reason I liked it so much is we got to be in the very front of the game, very front edge, as soon as it started. And we helped develop the application process, the very first things out of my mouth to the team was, we have all the county administration here, we have the directors here, we have the team here, we have a team in order. What does, what does the board want to do? So the priorities were individual assistance and business assistance through the application process, and then after that, some nonprofits. Okay, so we developed an application process, and I said, okay, so the rules are this, the U.S. Treasury gave us FAQs, the U.S. Treasury gave us rules, and those rules are law, and if you don't follow those rules, those costs could be, or expenditures could be disallowed. And one of the first things while I was sitting down going through this information, I said, you know, we need the clerk in the circuit court here, we need a representative here from the clerk's office. They have to be on board with this process. They have to be on board in the planning process, they have to be on board throughout the process, because they're the ones that sign the check. And if we don't provide adequate documentation to show this as an eligible expenditure, the clerk's trying to write the check, and this is going to fail. So in order for this program to work, we have to act as a team from the county, and that's what we did. Now, was everything rosy? No. Were there arguments? Absolutely. I prefer to call them discussions, and they worked out well for Sarasota County. So it was a great project, enormous impact to the community, sixty million dollars into their economic environment in an eight-month period. So the reason I give you those numbers is Sarasota County is a big county. Sarasota County probably has, and please don't take offense to this, but they probably have the most professional grant management office that I've ever dealt with, and they do an amazing job, but they could not have done this by themselves. And the recognition of, hey, our guys, they're, they're working a real job, they're not sitting around, you know, playing with the thumbs and playing on a computer, they're doing a real job. So when this money comes down from so many different sources in a very short period of time, it is a giant, giant workload, and people like us, we have the technical skills, the technical ability to perform this work, to assist you in this work, and when the project's over, we go away. You know, I think it's very important through all of our projects, the most important thing is planning. Being in that plan, part of the planning process is communication plan. It is, you know, you have a great crowd here tonight, it's very interested in the county, as they should be, and to keep a transparent process, what we do with our clients, we have weekly status reports, and those reports include accomplishments for that week, the budget, time budget, what time was spent, what was spent on, and what work was performed, an issues log, any issues that come up, and any solutions. So we maintain those logs and go through that, and that's what we do. It's just so important with these funds to make sure they're spent in an eligible fashion, they aren't disallowed seven years down the road, and someone comes in and audits you, and you're in trouble and have to pay them back. One of the things we bring as a CPA firm is the understanding of an audit process. So when we jump into projects like this, we make sure at the end of the process, you're audited. You say, Steve, what, what the heck does auditing mean? With DEM, the Division of Emergency Management and Public Assistance, we have PDFs. Those PDFs include the original estimates of the project, any change orders, the procurement process that has to be competitively bid, we show that, it's all in the documentation, all the way up to proof of payment. We also have narratives to look, to show that we look for duplication of payments, because that's fraud. We also have documentation that shows the timeline of when those funds can be expended for projects, after one date, and before the end of the period of performance. So it's super important to know that period of performance, it's super important to understand all of the requirements federal funds require. And a lot of times, you'll hear me say written policies and procedures, or written procurement or purchasing policy. The reason I say written is because two CFR two hundred, Uniform Guidance, which is a whole combination of the old OMD circulars that govern federal funds going out, require written policies and procedures. And we look at that when we come in, we look at, make sure your contracts have contract provisions in them, they're required by two CFR two hundred. So there's a lot of oversight, monitoring, and compliance areas that we look at as we do the work for our clients. So, you know, I've gone through this, I've given a couple of examples, and I know it sounds like a sales pitch, and it is, absolutely, but again, we want to compete for your business, and we also don't want you to leave any money on the table. So I sure appreciate y'all's time, and if there's any questions now or later, if you have my business card, it has my cell phone on it, and I have that sucker on me all the time. So please call me if you have any questions, and Brittany and Nicole are the experts, getting down in the, in the detail, but we get into it, we'll get it done. So, thank you.
Yeah, I have a question, regarding the CARES Act in Sarasota, CARES Act in Sarasota County. I know that's a great, a trumpet area, big area. Does it make a difference, the area compared to rural community, like, maybe on Swan County?
Well, there's certainly a difference, but I believe every county, every local government needs assistance sometime, because particularly this time, with the funds that are coming down, and the technical requirements, the laws, the rules, the regulations, and when someone like Sarasota County who does have a very good, and a lot of people in their grant department, when they say we need help, you know, they recognize it, they identified it, and they pulled someone in, and, you know, we had thirty people on site in their EOC working for about eight months, and now we're assisting them with their Emergency Rental Assistance Program, we're down to three people working. So, you know, ramp up, ramp down, and, you know, we can assist either way. So sure, there's a difference depending on the funds going out and everything else, but regardless, people need help.
That's right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else need to ask me a question? I'm sure it went, I'm storing some phone numbers.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
But I met with them earlier, and we had a discussion before I came down here, and we went through a lot of other stuff in, you know, a little more detail, which, you know, I want all y'all to be here too at some point, but it's just, I just had them over because it, and until I talked to them today, didn't really know where it all fits in, but after talking to them today, you, you find out that, and I don't know, because I'm not around in the administration office every day, so I don't know if we're missing anything, not missing anything, and, and that's, that's where I think you come in, and that's, that's why I wanted to have you here tonight.
Yes, sir. The county administrator has a general responsibility issue, and we sure would be glad to help you, if need. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I have my?
Yes, sir.
My question, Steve, would be like hypothetically, your, your, your company would come in and help us determine where we may have missed an opportunity or access them.
Yes, sir.
Some funding coming down the pipe, right?
Yes, sir.
I mean, the sheriff does have a lot on his plate, and Shannon as well, and I saw how thick that book.
Yes, sir.
That rule was, I mean, it's a lot of details.
Wish the words were a little bigger, but.
Can I just ask, what's the process, how does that work? Our, our board contacts you and says, hey, we want you to look at our budget and our project and determine if there's an opportunity that we have missed? Is that, is that a question you get asked, I guess, even I'm asking you?
Yes, sir, absolutely, and, and the, the process that I would recommend that you take is a competitive, competitive bid process through the county's procurement office. You know, a lot of other counties have put grant administration or U.S. Treasury funds out to bid, and we can certainly, you know, send some of that information to your county administrator and procurement office so that they can leverage those RFPs, RQs if they'd like, but, you know, I'd recommend a competitive bid process, and if it's COVID-19 PA, you know, put that in there, but if you, if you wanted it to be, you know, a wider, broader scope, you know, I'd include U.S. Treasury funds, FEMA grant funds, or any federal grant funds, however, you know, whatever you deem, the county administrator deem appropriate. We are, and I don't think I mentioned this earlier, Thomas Howell Ferguson is on state term contracts, and those state term contracts have been competitively bid. We are on the accounting and performance audit state term contract, we're on the management consulting state term contract, and we're also on a health benefits consulting state term contract. So we, we, we have been, you know, gone through the bid process, we do have the qualifications, and I certainly have hired people that are a lot smarter than I am, Nicole and Brittany are the prime examples, and we deliver high-quality work product, and, you know, you will receive those state term contract rates, there will not be any type of premium on top of those, and if, if we're lucky enough to win the process, we'll, we'll dive in hard, working with the county administration, and the clerk's office, and the board, and make sure that not only do you have a transparent process, but that you get updates.
I mean, it's not a decision we won't make tonight.
No, 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 sir.
I mean, as, I think you said it right, said it correctly, with the opportunities flowing down from the feds due to COVID, CARES, and ARPA and all that, I mean, there's a lot of opportunities out there, and I'd hate for our county to miss it because of the fine print details that we just opened up.
Right.
Or there's money that we don't, even though it exists.
That's, that's half of it, right, though, I took it away from that, for sure.
Well, and, like, with the, 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 some of those funds that, like, through FEMA, they're, they're reimbursing your fees.
Yes, sir.
So at that point, it just looks like a win-win situation, we can get our own basis. But like I said, I just, I just wanted to bring you and let you, yeah, let you present, I was interested, and, and that's why I invited them to come and, and talk to us, and, and just looking for more avenues to, to help with them.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, and thank y'all again for your time and the opportunity to present to you, and anytime you need us back, don't hesitate to call us. Thank you.
Out of number ten, I'll be presenting by Mike Rissel with Buchanan, Ingersoll, and Rudy. And I won't tell you, fellows, how hard a time I give this guy right here, but.
I was talking about him. It was a pleasure meeting you when you came over to Tallahassee. And actually, it actually works out perfect, because what I do, what Steve does, dovetails perfectly together. I'm Mike Rissel, I'm with Buchanan, Ingersoll, and Rudy, a lawyer lobbying shop out of Tallahassee. Do a little bio about myself, I spent about four years in Enterprise Florida as the executive vice president of Enterprise Florida, the just, the state's public private job creation, doing most of their lobbying, been out for about four years now on my own doing lobbying, worked for different organizations. One guy that I did get to bring, and I kept him back in the office, Mark Cruz, if we get to work with y'all, y'all meet a lot, Mark is my sidekick, my partner, Ron, he was the, he's brand new lobbying, but I got lucky enough to steal him out of the governor's office of policy and budget, where he oversaw all economic development and transportation for Governor Ron DeSantis for the last three years, and Governor Scott for the six years prior. So budget expert, transportation expert, policy expert. One thing, I won't run through the whole presentation if you guys got it, but one thing I'll just say is, you know, we got folks all over the state, we have lawyers, we have lobbyists, we're focused, though, on a lot of rural activities. One thing that's special about representing rural counties is it takes a certain type of person to know the issues. We work a lot with the Florida Rural Economic Development Association, that's where I got to be the chairman, that we're all based. And I told the chairman, and I want to tell you guys too, we're already working with y'all. So we actually have a couple of bills moving right now that are going to be very beneficial to Swan County. Just got some good news, our House bill, economic development is up Thursday in the Commerce Committee, so what that bill would do is it would actually blow up the rural infrastructure funds, the rules behind it right now, and allow you to go out and get rural infrastructure money without a project in hand. So I know I was talking to Kimmy, that's a big deal for a county like this. You don't have to go out to improve that sewer, that water, you don't have to have a project signed on the dock, we've got it now, where we're thinking of getting across the finish line, where you can go out and get that improvement done. It's why I said this stuff sells perfect, so these guys. these guys go find the money that you guys want, and then I go lobby for it. So I work a lot with DEO, DOT, DEOs, where ninety percent of the projects that we all work with are for economic development, transportation stuff. Enterprise Florida, obviously, is a partner agency with DEO, so I've worked lots with them, I know their issues. Mark actually oversaw them in the governor's office. One thing I want to point out, though, is that a lot of folks think that the sixty-day window of sessions is your only chance to get an appropriation. It's not. Like, like they said, there's a lot of federal money coming down. The budget is, we're about two weeks away from budget conference in Tallahassee, so we'll start to see where the breakdowns, where a lot of that federal money is going to go. The governor has requested a hundred million dollars to the rural infrastructure fund. So that would be a huge deal for rural communities. The governor's also suggested eighty-five million dollars for the Florida Job Growth Grant Fund. That's workforce education and infrastructure projects for towns. So there's lots of money that's potentially sitting out there. House and Senate are going to have their theories on it too, but there's a lot of money that has come down from the federal government that's one-time spends, and I say this in a public meeting, I think the governor wants to get the money out the door as fast as possible. We are in election. So, you guys tend to decide statewide elections in rural communities. So, I think there's, again, lots of opportunities. There is not an end date on appropriations in Tallahassee, because that money is appropriated by the legislature and then goes to the agencies. And then, you know, between these guys and our guys, if you can't, if you can't find the money, it's not there. But there's lots of opportunities for growth. Rural is very important to us. We represent Columbia County just down the street. I was down, these guys were in Columbia County this morning, I was in Columbia County last night, so I'm driving back and forth to Tallahassee a lot. Old Jim has spent a lot of money at the Busy Bee on my drive through. So, but we love the opportunity to work with you. I'm like, Steve, I'd say it how I mean right now. If we're, you know, we're over halfway through session at this point. But, you know, one thing to think about when it comes to rural communities, that's so much different than representing a Dade County. Chairman, you and I talked about this, and I would never want to represent a Dade County, or Brown County, or Palm Beach County. But it's a little bit harder with a rural county, is you guys have one state rep and one state, and one senator that fights for, what, eight, ten counties, all in one spot. So it's hard to focus them. The extra benefit of having someone on the ground in Tallahassee full-time is that we can do that also when the state rep, this Scott, hates another project that he's trying to focus on. I think you have Rep. Brandon right now, but if the maps change, I think if the maps stay the way they are, you dominate them. If I remember correctly, I was talking to Representative Brandon about it the other day. So that's a whole new set, and a whole new legislature that you got to get on their issues. That's where we come into play also, because we help educate the legislators on what the issues are for the county. It's a lot, especially for rural Florida. We work on a lot of rural stuff, I've said that eighteen times, but it's, there's very few folks that do it that know. And we're very dedicated to helping rural communities. I call, I was texting, I shouldn't say I was texting, but I was, on my way here, with one of my freebie guys, and it's nice for us, you know, we represent a variety of different classes. These are our nice white hat issues, as I like to call them. It's a lot easier to go to the legislature and ask for money for rural community right now than it is to go and ask for Dade County or Brown County. So, we'd love to work with y'all. These guys are great, we actually work with them a lot. I don't, Chairman didn't plan this, because I didn't even know y'all were going to be here. But it actually dovetails perfectly together, because it's all about finding money for you guys and getting more money for your county. And I think Chairman, I told you, you are one of five counties in Flori-, out of sixty-seven counties in Florida, you're one of five that doesn't have representation in Tallahassee. So, love to do it. I will say, from Steve's standpoint, lobbying services don't have to be RFP, they don't have to be bid out, it's specialty services, so you can hire who you want to. But we'd love the opportunity to work through any questions Chairman and I have to.
Well, just so the board understands that we have an agreement that you are going to guarantee me ten to one return on my money.
Well, then I'll jack up the fee.
Well, we're not right around it. Well, you don't press the law.
And that Chairman, I think, I'm not a lawyer, so I'm just a lobbyist. It's almost, it's almost as bad.
Think you got mixed with him.
But no, I have to answer any questions, Chairman.
Well, I appreciate you coming, I appreciate you presenting, and, you know, I didn't plan for this either.
Yeah, obviously.
But I appreciate both of you coming, and, you know, it's, my goal is infrastructure for our county, that's why I'm after.
There's, we both talked about it, like I said, if the governor gets the budget he wants, it's going to be very impressive. But also know that what we figured out at the rural summit, Dale Register from Bay County figured it out, I think if he got a hundred million dollars for all the rural communities, it's, I say only, it's only like three point seven million dollars, you broke it out completely even amongst all the rural counties. You know, that's, that's not a lot of money. You could probably, you know, now granted, it's better than the three million dollars people are getting for the rural infrastructure fund for all thirty-two counties that are designated rural, but, you know, I think there's a lot of projects that are out there that are ready to go. I know Jimmy Battles, the stuff he wants to go after, I'd be working that, but it's going to be uber competitive. And, you know, like I said, now of the five counties that don't have lobbyists, five, all five of them are rural, so, you know, that's the extra added advantage. But, you know, again, Columbia's considered rural, they decided to make the effort to go out there and get us and just go after all the infrastructure money, same thing, they can get. But we want to get all the money to the right rural communities.
Well, it's just a, the way I look at it is just a once-in-a-lifetime shot right here.
One-time one.
It's a big Christmas tree, and if you don't do it, you got to do it now, while they're handing out money, because it's going to take forever as a rural county, small county, with enough tax money to put in all that infrastructure you're going to need in this county to make it grow. And that's why I'm so hard after it.
If we can effectively change the way it's done, and we, our, both House and Senate, our bills are moving, if we can effectively change that, and we're taking away some match programs with the rural lobbying loan program, we're taking away some match programs with the rural, rural regional development grants, the legislature right now is very rural. Why, Representative Brad Drake, from, you know, the other side of Tallahassee, he's been very active and wanted to get, it's his last year, he wanted to get a big rural bill passed, and we got it moving. We were all very surprised it was moving as well as it is right now. And then on the Senate side, we have Senator Albrecht, which is a little bit easier, because he's been Senate President for a few years. And I will say that also, you guys should get ready, so three years from now, Senator Ben Albrecht will be Senate President. He is focused laser on rural. He's from Martin County, you know, he gets it, so he is laser-focused on getting stuff done for rural. So there's, there's a good window that's coming for rural communities, to get money both inside session and after.
And, Mr. Chairman, that was my question, what were the funding opportunities? You say, not a question on the sponsor, after session either, we don't want that one, they're efficient.
It's rural infrastructure fund and Florida Job Growth Grant Fund. Those are, so Mark and I, this is the nice part, Mark was in the governor's office, and I was in Enterprise Florida, when we developed the Job Growth Grant Fund. That was a big compromise between Enterprise Florida, the governor, and the Speaker of the House. We've seen the projects, we actually were the team that kind of approved the first two years' projects they out the door. If the governor gets his eighty-five million dollars, now that's for all sixty-seven counties, it can go anywhere. But we actually had a piece of our bill this year that tried to carve out ten percent for the first six months for rural. The governor's office pushed back, and they gave us the numbers, because they're giving better than ten percent to rural communities right now out of that fund. So, and that's all infrastructure, and that's also workforce, too. So if you have workforce training you guys need to do, that's a big piece of it there, that you can get money from there. Those are the two big ones that are on our minds for that. And there's, there's some other grants and programs at DEO, but that, those are the two big money ones that are sitting.
Maybe, could you just touch on the matching grants? What, and what I'm going with this, and what I'm thinking is, we got this ARPA money sitting there right now, and you take that money and you get matching grants on it, you get potential to double up that money if you don't spend it first.
Well, and that's, and actually, what, what we're trying to do this year, just so you all know, is to try to remove a lot of those matching grants, that, the match part of the grants that you guys, and the DEO programs that you guys would use. So, yes, let me begin, it's all, you guys have money coming, the state's got money coming, this is the year that's matched everything up, but if we can lower those match programs, we hope to make these, those programs that we're talking about, rural infrastructure fund, the match, we're hoping to make that go away. What the new amendment should do tomorrow is that the state, we, it used to be that the county had to match, I think, fifty percent of the project costs on a infrastructure project. Our bill, as we had it moving, dropped, had seventy-five percent of the project cost. Amendment going into House bill tomorrow, is already in the Senate bill, is the state paid a hundred percent of the infrastructure cost on the rural infrastructure. So, again, if that bill passes, we still have the, you know, a long way to go, but the last committee stops both sides, but it's been flying right now. We get that done, that's, that's a hundred million dollars in rural infrastructure fund money that you guys don't have.
Well, and I want to say something here, I'm not, our administration, and they do a great job at finding the money, and I'm not saying that they're not, I'm just saying maybe sometimes we need some help.
No, and.
And maybe there's avenues you know that they don't know, but I'm just wanting to get their fruit from the tree.
Chairman, you're absolutely right, and again, we work a lot with the small communities. And having Mark Cruz on my team, he's a budget expert, that's what he did for, actually, he did it for eight, eight years in the, in the governor's office, before that, he was in the House, and was a budget guy. So, you know, having somebody that knows where the lines are in the budget is unbelievable. I've learned a lot from him in the one year that we've been working together at Buchanan. So, yes, and even more so than that, in my mind, it's not knowing where the money is, it's getting the agency to give it to you. That halves the battle is finding the money, you got to be able to have, they have to actually give you the money. You know, your program, your, your project you're trying to accomplish has to get to the top of their list. And, again, not that my profession is a, you know, the most noblest of all time with being a lobbyist, but you kind of have to have somebody that's bugging them every day. Talk to Columbia County, like, we have unwanted about four of their projects that they had gotten, were voided, and just by, like, getting DEO to work with us. Like, hey, you know, they're getting there, they're getting there, slow down, they're coming over the trans and asking for more money, and we're like, slow down, let's get that one done first, then go on to here. But that's our job, is we're there to continually bug. It's bug, it's not lobbying, it's bug. We just bug people a lot. You know, the calls, the texts, hey, you know, where are we at on this project, where are we at on this project? Okay, remember my guys, you got to move them up to your own list. So, that's, that's, I think, where we offer the biggest benefits to you guys, is just the constant reminders. You know, my, I love my, I love my bill sponsor, for my House bill, Brad Drake, but I have to be in Brad's office three times a week. Hey, Brad, you do this, hey, Brad, you do this. You know, just that sort of follow-up, every step along the way is what's needed, because, again, rural representatives and senators have lots of people they have to care about. So you just need somebody with a gentle reminder, this is what's important to Swan County, this is what's important to Swan County.
Any other questions?
Yeah, how much, how much, how much does it cost?
We have a maximum amount per month with a ten-to-one guarantee, so he can't raise the rate that we guarantee to him.
I don't remember that contract. But, no, so, you know, range is, range is varied, you know, I'm one of, the chairman's beat me up the first time he met me about how much I would charge him. I will say, the last time I talked to him, I did offer a rate that was less than Columbia County's. So if you guys are already sitting, I don't tell Columbia County folks. They have a lot more problems than y'all. But, no, but I think I, you know, I would guess my average, we got five random ones, which is a lot cheaper than a lot of other places charge, but, you know, I guess a lot cheaper than a lot of other places charge, but, you know, we got to make it, we got to make a living to it. And what I tell my clients is this, is like, look, the way this works, contract lobbying works, is I have a book of business that I have to, I have to deal with, and my firm makes me do. I have to then sometimes make a decision between who's paying for this and who's paying for this, and this person usually wins. So that's why I never try to lowball anybody, because I don't want y'all underpaying me, so I'm like, oh, I got to go deal with Swan County. But, no, I think that would be my mind, I think would be fair, that would make me really focus on y'all and make sure. Because here's the thing, if y'all are successful, y'all spread the word on us. That's kind of, that's honestly how I got to meet the chairman, is we had done great work for the Florida Rural Economic Development Association, and Jeff Hendry, and he's been chairman. So, we try and do good work all the time, because all that means is more progress for us. So, I want to represent all rural counties, but.
But we're going to be number one on the list, of course.
Well, unfortunately, I'm scared of you, so. The chairman worries me. He'll show up at my house in Tallahassee.
Well, do you like hunting and fishing? We got a lot of good places to go around here.
I'm happy to, anytime you want to. I also, I got a lease in Columbia County, I'm happy to get one.
We don't have beachfront property, but we got some really good hunting and fishing, we got the river.
Hundred percent ready to go. Anytime y'all want. I'm ready to come over, but, and the chairman knows, is I'm around, I am pretty good time, too. I will, I'm not afraid to buy a drink or two, if it comes around to it, so.
He will duck out early on.
I will duck out early. It's committing weeks, yeah, I mean, in session, I, this, it was actually a luxury for me to come out here and talk to you guys. I've got good backup back at the office, because I had to sneak out at about three-thirty. I was doing a conference call from y'all's parking lot before I walked in. But, yeah, I'd love to work with you guys, it's, you know, rural is a passion for me. I spent a lot of time on it when I was at Enterprise Florida, and that's how I got to know Jeff so well, was, you know, I actually cared about what was going on in rural communities. I joke, because I'm born and raised in Hillsborough County, and then went to high school in Palm Beach County, but both times I was on the Indian sides, so I grew up in rural Florida, just happened to be in the wrong counties. So I don't get to claim rural, but, but no, I get it, that's where I grew up, and it's a work.
I do agree, Mr. Chairman. I do agree with what you said, and sometimes I feel like with us as rural county, we get overlooked a lot of times. Some of the other boards I sit on have larger communities, and I see what gets, I'll send to them, you know, from DOT, and other various parts of the government. I always want, you know, rural community to get our piece of that.
That was the right time, if you guys were going to do, again, I firmly believe, because I do it for a living, that this is how you get your attention on you, is that, again, I love Chuck Renner, that he represents Columbia County for me, too, I get to work with him a lot. But he gets overwhelmed with all the requests he has on appropriations and bills and everything else, because everybody's coming to him for that one thing. So, having that one extra set of eyes, and by the way, I say one extra set of eyes, you don't just get me, don't just get Mark, we have six registered lobbyists at the firm, that all of them can help. You know, if somebody's got a great relationship, if you guys are in front of Gail Harrow, Senator Gail Harrow out of Hero Beach, we actually have folks on our team that are very close with her, we send them to go talk to her. If I don't have the relationship, somebody on our team will, that's where we, you know, that's where we go with it. So, we, we run deep. I'm actually, I'm forty-three years old, and I'm the youngest guy at the firm, so we have relationships. I'll mention Jim and Bill offhand, because he was Governor Bush's legislative affairs director, he's with our firm now. This was his, this is his thirty-fifth legislative session. So, if there's angles and pots of money, Jim knows where they are. So, yeah, it's not just, and I should point that, it's not just me, it's also, you get everybody, whoever you want, and whoever has the relationship, that's who you get, that's who you get.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mark.
Thank you for coming.
Appreciate you, thank you.
I'll, I'll give you the contract.
Okay. All righty. Under Commissioner Allen's permission, I'll do something.
Yes.
Yes. I got a phone call or two in the last week or so, you know, our, our four-yard container price went up, and this was from a couple of local churches. And I told these folks I would bring them to the board's attention if we could talk about it. And I would just, again, talking and thinking out loud when I was having these discussions, I want to throw up front of the board, if you guys would entertain the idea for churches using, and I think from what I've gathered, they don't use four-yard containers, probably the smallest one, maybe just having a flat rate fee for them. I don't know how much, and I ain't got all the details, I don't know how much waste they're producing or not producing, but just for our local churches, it's like, this would be good.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to follow that up. I've also had some calls, possibly some of the same folks, but a few numbers here and a couple ideas, and just like to see what the board's thoughts are. So, one particular church asked the, the person I was talking to, kind of give me the numbers there, what they were looking at, so. And also, I called Mr. Harrison, asking how many churches we had that actually had commercial dumpsters. So we have eleven in the county that we have a service. Now, I can't tell you all those four yards, but off of what, the one that I've actually had a conversation with is a four yard, but the price prior to our increase, they were paying forty-four fifty-eight a month for that dumpster service. Once we had the new change, their price went to a hundred and forty dollars made sense. I also asked her if she had reached out to the other, one of the other companies that are considering servicing our county, or our companies and folks. They, she did have a price from them for right around ninety-four dollars. So, my thought process on this is, I think, after I said, when I first had the conversation, I didn't have a whole lot of response, because I needed to think about it, but after I thought about it a little bit, I feel like at the end of time. I, I feel like at the end of time, we're, we're kind of hitting these people twice, because all these people just got charged the rate increase on the residential side. So, these people are paying, and then they're going to church, and we're charging them again. I would like to see the board consider doing something to alleviate some of this pain for these folks, uh, churches. I mean, we're servicing them under a business, but I don't really feel like the churches are a business. They're, I don't see them being in it for profit. If, if I had a thought process on this, I would like to see, I would like to see us be able to allow them to get the service, have the new rates in place, but whatever that rate is, they would be charged fifty percent of that new rate, which their bill is at forty-four dollars, it would put their, this person's bill about seventy-one dollars now, the new rate.
That's what I wrote, I have four things to write, seventy-five dollars for a bill, that's a flat rate.
Well, my only, my only question on that, and I don't have a problem with doing that for the churches at all, is that we raised our prices for a reason, and now you've got a private company coming in and is taking a lot of that business, so what happens when we're down to just the private company, has got all the commercial cans? How, how do you, how do you go about doing that? If we're not servicing commercial cans anymore?
They would have to pay the commercial holler at that point, because you could pay the commercial holler for it.
Well, that's kind of where I'm going with this, you, you've only got eleven customers there, and at some point, we're gonna be out of the commercial can business, and are we just gonna go service those eleven cans? Or what's the thought process on that?
We're gonna be, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
We're gonna be servicing our cans every day, if we got to service those cans, I feel like that, I feel like that commercial service that's coming and doing the rest of them, I would think over time, they can work their, if we was at seventy and they're at ninety-three, I would think that over time, they could bridge that gap. But I'm saying, I'm saying we hit them all at once, as we did everyone. I'm saying it's a struggle in the rural community, and most of these churches are very small, handful of people that's toting the load, COVID nineteen took away from their funds, what people's able to give, I mean.
And again, I, I'm all for it, I'm just trying to think, think ahead and think through it to how this looks at some point here, when we're no longer servicing those cans, that's my only question on it. I mean, we can do it for sure, you know, while we're still doing it, but at some point, it's gonna be a private sucker thing, you know, they don't. My way of thinking, we need to have to subsidize the private contractor to keep it at that rate, at that point? Or he would agree to do it for the churches for that rate? I mean, I, I don't, that's, just what I'm, I'm not, not down on the idea, I'm, I'm all in favor of it, as a matter of fact, but I just.
Well, I, I think through it. I think we could, if the board so chooses, we could get to the point, our rate at this point in time, and then give us time moving forward, I don't think we're gonna be out of this service today or tomorrow. I mean, it, it is a process, and at the same time, you know, our office could have discussion with the, the commercial businesses, let them know what we, what we're doing on that side, far as churches are concerned, and obviously, it will be their decision if they're willing to, you know, bridge that gap more, that difference in, in the amount, but.
And I agree with that, I mean, and maybe that's, maybe that is our next step, is have that conversation with them, but I don't want to take that away, you know, from those guys either, that they've stepped up, but obviously, we're starting to get phone calls, you know, yeah.
Well, I mean, it's just, I think, I think the process has to start somewhere, and I think we, we have the authority for it to start right here, is my, is my thoughts, but I just would like.
So, we're, we're talking about setting a flat rate of seventy-five a month, is what you're talking about?
No, I'm talking about whatever their rate is, it would just be fifty percent of their, of their charge, because you can't just do seventy-five, because one might have a six-yard container, so then you get into.
So you just want to do it on a percentage basis?
That would be, unless someone had a better idea.
Yeah, and I can't live that number off of a four-yard container, this thought process.
It's two hundred, this, this is three hundred. If you want to entertain a motion, you have to do that.
Well, I was gonna ask the attorney, where, 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 what is this flip block, or what do we need to do?
Typically, what you have to do in this situation is by resolution, especially with the garbage, there's a requirement under our new thing that we just did, uh, I think it's two weeks' notice to be able to do that before you can then address it. So, I mean, if that's an idea that you want to do, then we can start drafting a resolution to be considered after it's advertised for two days.
So, it'll be two days from now before we do.
Question is, is that something we want to direct the attorney to do at this point?
Oh, absolutely, I mean, that's, that's.
Do you need a motion for that, for that, or?
Uh, just consensus to tell me to get after it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
My, my only, my, I mean, this is the first time, trying to think about this really quickly.
Yeah.
Been out a lot of time. My only, my only question, I don't have a problem with it, I'm okay with helping churches that get their, 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 um, revenue streams have been cut, their obligations, a lot of them have been cut significantly in part participation due to, uh, COVID and whatnot, and the fear of whatever, but, um, I just want to make sure that on those numbers, and maybe we just direct staff or ask staff to make sure that, I don't think that it would be fair, as long as we're covering our cost of doing it, I mean, I don't expect us to be generating revenue, but I also don't want to do it, I don't think that it would be fair to do it below our cost, because then we're gonna have nonprofits say, hey, what about, what about us? Um, I mean, we're not a profit too, and we're, we're doing all these things helping the community, just. I mean, I, I, I get it, I'm not against it, I just want to make sure we're being fair across the board, just for the whole.
Well, that was another question I was gonna ask the attorney, are we?
You're gonna find that they're all gonna fall into the same category.
Well, are we violating any kind of law, or any, you know, I don't know what you would say there, but as far as religious deal?
No, you go back to like being, you know, you're taxing, like the property appraiser looks at it, you could use that type of definition, so they fall under those types of categories, or under that category, to make it all, but you get more than just religious organizations, you get more nonprofits and stuff that should fall under the category as fair as.
No, I'm sorry.
Actually, you just discussed my question.
The one thing I would say about the nonprofits, I mean, I'm gonna, I'm gonna argue the facts with y'all, so, I'm, I'm gonna, I mean, I'm here to argue tonight, so we'll argue. Uh, the nonprofits, they come every year, and they're, they're all available to come and ask for funds from the county, uh, and we give a lot out to the nonprofits, and everyone has a right, I don't, I don't recall giving any of that thing out to churches.
That's true. Mr. Chairman, I agree, it's almost, it's, it's, whatever Mr. Stables said, I had written, I said, if I was a flat rate, I mean, if staff didn't, especially when I'm losing money, I agree with that, but I, I don't know what we, I mean, churches, in my mind, I would say, we don't generate everyday trash like a business would, you know? We could be classed weak, must have done something like that, but. But if we rat that resolution, Mr. Pravat, like you said, we're gonna catch more than just the churches at that point, and at that point, you're gonna have to give it to them, are you not? Or the same offer that you're giving the church?
Yes, sir. If you get that type of definition, I'm not sure you can tighten it on down, um, not limit it onward, if you can tighten it down to just churches, religious organizations, that type of thing.
Well, I was kind of aware of that.
So, that's what I've said, using a broader category that's already being utilized, you know, for taxation purposes and stuff, it beats state requirements and stuff, so that would be, but you're gonna catch more, it's good.
Do you want the attorneys to review that before they report back?
Yes, sir.
Do you wanna, do you wanna do that, like?
Yeah, that, that's a good idea, I think, is to let him look at it and see.
And then also find what our costs are.
Yeah, I do know.
Have those two things at the next meeting, and then a back decision, how to do it.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
I can tell you here, the numbers, the rates that you're at right now are not, they're not money-making numbers. We're actually trying to cover costs, so I haven't said that, um, personally, I think you'd be better off establishing a percentage, because, um, you're putting money in to solid waste right now, you're subsidizing right now, so it would be a matter of record, some of that funding to make up that difference. And I'm just gonna point this out, for record, in case someone thinks about this later, we are not talking about properties that are being assessed, you know, residential household assessment, that's an entirely different issue that's handled under a uniform approach, and methodology that is handled separately from what we're talking about right now, so, um, and we can look like we did for the churches, see if we can determine how many nonprofits or non-profits that are currently servicing the containers and try to account those for this, uh, we can figure that out, if I can.
So, so we have consensus to move forward for that? Any other commissioner?
People approach it as a percentage, I mean.
Yes, correct, as a percentage. I'm good with that. Well, I just think it's fair, like you said, if there's a board, it's a different call, so if you do a percentage thing, it works out fairly, I think. Any other Commissioner Allen? Under General Business, Island Number Eleven, discuss with possible board action surplus properties, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, you have several properties that we listed on here. The first seven on this list, um, we're gonna ask you to establish minimum bids on, you've got the numbers here in your packet, number eight, first thing you'll need to do is play the surplus, you've already evaluated them, and we have a valid account to use for these purposes, and we're gonna try to continue bringing you five, ten of these things at, uh, the first ones that you know that we did had actual improvements on them, so they were treated differently, um, but in any event, these first seven, we're just gonna ask that you establish a minimum number, um, on those. The eighth one, we'll bring back to you, but for sure, all of them, we need to ask you to play the surplus if you want to.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Before we dive on in this, I just want to let the two presenters know, I don't think that this board will be feeling any disrespect, if y'all want to go, we both know y'all traveling.
Yeah.
But if y'all, if you guys will go home, I mean, we're gonna be here for a little while, we will not take it by any disrespect if you guys jump out of here. Just, just want to further.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tony. Not trying to rush y'all, just.
I didn't mean you, Mr. North.
Are you, you sure? We're all driving an hour or two back home.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. There's going out with the people they're talking about getting more, huh?
Yeah, I see that.
Ee John, real quick.
I just reminded them I was first in line.
Anyway, Mr. Harris, resume my guest star.
Um, again, the first thing we need the board to consider is declaring these properties surplus. If we can do that, then you can consider what you want to do with one through seven. Um, if you want to establish a minimum number, you have that ability. Um, if in the alternative, if you want to send those seven over to the real estate company to handle, and let them establish a number, they fell well below the fresh threshold, we sent them over for appraisal, those first seven, and number eight exceeded the fifteen thousand dollars, so we'll send that for appraisal.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Harris, have you, have we, I know that they're eight, they meet their plaid box, whatnot, so I'm, I'm assuming they're all buildable, but have we checked flood zones to determine if any of them are potentially unbuildable? I've asked Mr. Pravat this before the meeting, just curiosity, but I didn't think about the flood zone part. If they fall under a significant flood zone, um, and were deemed, um, non-buildable, then they may would qualify for that adjoining landowner type deal, since their value's below that.
And I think a lot of those, that's exactly what I was thinking, was that's what's gonna happen with a lot of them, they are in a flood zone, but having adjacent homeowners that might be interested in.
Yeah, I mean.
Larger yard during dry periods.
I'm looking at the arrows on here, and most of these look like they are all, most of them are vacant lots, adjoining vacant lots, relatively small in size, obviously, due to the, um, if we could determine, due to flood zones, Mr. Meeks is here, um, Commissioner Meeks, potentially determine if these, any of these were non-buildable, so we could do that adjoining landowner deal and avoid the whole bidding process?
I mean, there's. As long as it's for that stuff, for that, we can do.
I think Mr. Meeks and I had this discussion already last, last week. Um, basically, the lots do qualify as buildable, they meet, as buildable under the code. Now, just because it's got a, a wet rating, you know, whether you can build on it or not with stilts, or however high, you know, that type of thing becomes an opinion, um, long do we get more homework on that, and then we're set up?
So, the, um, the properties, my gamble, we came by my office and we went through some of those, and now, majority of those properties, I don't know, I haven't looked at the entire list, but I think most of them was in the swing of the park estate. Um, most of all the properties, from what I can remember, were in one-hundred-year flood plain, and part, part of those properties were in the regulatory floodway. Uh, when you're in the regulatory floodway, you're subject to velocity and flow, uh, during a flood event. Um, based on those, uh, buildability of those properties, if you can elevate a home to at least have your, your finished floor one foot above you under your flood plain, you may be able to be issued a building permit. Now, other things that come into play is your setbacks of your structures off property lines, so sometimes it limits the size of the structure that may be, uh, located on the lots, as well as when you have an elevation survey, your, uh, setback permits are gonna be dependent upon the elevation. So, when you go to the environmental health department, you have to be at or above a certain elevation for them to be able to issue a setback permit. So, in essence, you can say that plaided lots in a subdivision are eligible for permit, but there may be other environmental issues that pop up, uh, whether that be elevations of the property, or whether that be a weapons issue, um, that could potentially lead a property to be non-built. But those properties as a whole, we look at them as being eligible for, for, you know, permit. There was one property, I don't know which one's pulled off, but there was a larger parcel that the county owned, it was like a triangular portion, that didn't appear like that that property had any legal access to it other than through the locks that were on the, the, um.
Right.
The, the roads that were there, and I, I've been aware that the county had owned that for quite some time, and I've kind of figured out why the county owned it, because no one could get to it. Um, but that, that area as well is in a flood plain, you know? So, I mean, you are eligible for permit, but you could have other issues like elevations and weapons that potentially could lead a property to be non-built.
So, we have to listen with the broker, right, Mr. Pravat?
Yes, sir, I mean, you don't have to listen with a broker. Uh, under the alternatives we have, we can go out and, you know, advertise for open auction, or, um, or closed auction, if you want to, do a courthouse step, advertise these properties, and then just, you know, have a, have a closed option to be able to do it. What we have chosen to do with the other properties is, is it's an alternative process to the regular statutory process. We could follow just the regular statutory process and give them that.
I like that idea for all these little ones, just advertise them as a, like a courthouse sale, and advertise them publicly to, in the local papers, or maybe put a few signs, or put, you know, for sales, I don't know, on, "Abate Public Sale, Such and Such Date," whatever, how we do that. And, I mean, they're relatively, four thousand, two thousand, two thousand.
And we're gonna have a lot more of these small properties than we, than we rural areas.
I mean, I would entertain it if the board would, just these little, I mean, there's a lot of these less than five thousand, advertising so that they're joining landowners, you can see them and do a one-time sale, you know, that morning sale on courthouse steps for these little ones, you know, instead of listing them every, single one of them individually, and.
We could come up with some signs that we could put on these, and just list the dates, and they're gonna be auctioned. And just do a, and start mailing everybody, if we put a little sign out there, we, we'd make that happen.
Would we advertise in the newspapers as well, or?
We have to do the newspaper for public notice.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. I would, I'm, I'm supportive of what Commissioner Land says, and all that I would say is, as Mr. Meeks said, that they're all buildable, but just needs to be something that keeps harm from the county for us, those potential buyers doing, doing the other.
As is where he has, where his.
That's typically the process. There will be as is, no questions, you know, one, one out there.
No warranties, no.
I just don't want someone to come back and say, you know, all this property, you know, trying to build, nothing to build.
I'll call the chairman at one eight hundred.
As long as y'all got the legal matters, I'm good.
As is where he is, yah, yah, yah.
Just a consensus on the one through seven of those, or is it?
A consensus on surplus, you know, all eight are late.
I would, I mean, I would, I would honestly, you're talking about one through seven, Commissioner Hail, I would be okay with number eight as well, due to the.
Where it's at.
Where it's at, and surrounded by, yeah, access is very limited, mostly, I mean, it's a really, very unique piece of property.
Actually, we can't get to that one if you oppose the sign without trespassing on someone else. It'd make a great hollaport.
So the adjoining landowners are gonna be your most likely buyers of that?
I think so.
I mean, I would be okay with all of them on that hollaport.
You need a motion, I make a motion, one, two, eight? I have a motion by Commissioner.
Surplus, first surplus.
Oh, I have a surplus, one, two, eight.
There's a list, we'll do it, thanks for the second.
Motion by Commissioner Hail to surplus all eight properties, second by Commissioner Stapleton, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Are you gonna adopt the statutory method for disposing of them?
I would. Do we need a motion for that, Mr.?
Yes, sir.
I would make a motion to adopt a statutory process for selling those eight, the eight properties. As is.
I see. Motion by Mr. Land, second by Commissioner Hail, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Island Number Twelve, discuss with possible board action, solid waste windshield permits, permit stickers. I mean, Mr. Harris.
Commissioners, we've disposed into lots of companies that finally started getting back with the end of the holidays. But I think we've spoken to probably eight or ten companies to get rates. And appears that an estimate on what it will cost to produce two of these static plane windshield permits for people who have paid the solid waste assessment, then mailed those all out with the letters, thinking that they need to, where they need to put them on windshield. Estimated cost is about thirteen thousand dollars, that includes postage and everything else. We had attempted to do this and have to go out with tax collectors notices, but it just could not happen, could make that happen. So that's where we are right now. And I had a question. And again, this is the purpose of trying to turn away people that are from out of county, that are using our collection sites that are not paying the assessment, and others that are not paying the assessment. But my question for you commissioners, if, if we made a way to do this, is whether or not you want to make decals available to persons who live within the county that do not pay the assessment, who would like to use the containers. And if so, my suggestion would be that they pay the same amount that everyone is paying to pay the assessment. Now, those would be people within the city limits, because you've got collection sites that are well-used by city residents that are not paying the county household assessment. Some of those people may desire to purchase that permit, tend to use the sites. But they won't be able to unless the board agrees with, with the standard they're under.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'm, to answer, I got two, two things. One, I'm okay with Mr. Harris's suggestion of, you know, of non-assessment thing, person would like to purchase the stickers or decals or what have you, that they be allowed to do so at the same rate as everyone else is paying for annual assessment. And, and at those time periods run along with, you know, our residential units. My, my other question was, is, I'm not a big fan of the stickers. Is there any other costs, or any others, maybe like the, maybe not like the handicap decals, I think for rear views, you know, that, that's removable? So, I know we got some folks out there, I think Commissioner Stapleton's very meticulous about his vehicle, it's very pretty, I don't know that he'd like a sticker, I know.
What, what we gotta paint a number on the site?
I don't like stickers either, I was looking for something a little more removable.
I don't, I don't even, I'm a set guy, I don't even wanna talk about set plus, I don't wanna talk about garbage. I don't wanna talk about any, I don't wanna talk about stickers. I mean, I'm just, the people's tired of hearing about them too.
I mean, everybody's tired of hearing about it, but, I mean, I understand we got to cross this bridge, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna let y'all lead the way on it.
Well, I guarantee I'm not talking about garbage, but it's just.
It's just gonna go away.
Yeah, it's, it's hurting everybody, this, it's just.
It's never gonna go away, unfortunately.
Well, it's just, it's not fair to our residents, I mean, I see it in my district, I know we all do, out of county folks bringing us their garbage, and we're having to put the bill for it. And our, our, you know, our residents are paying an assessment fee based on the amount of tons we're generating. And we're generating garbage, it's not ours in some, some cases.
I, I didn't catch y'all, but I, I will, look, I'll, I'll, within reason, I'll support what y'all, what you fellows are gonna do, but I will say this, you are fixing to put some strain on our people that work at the, at sites. It's, there's gonna be some fights, I'm just telling you, people gonna come in there to dump their garbage, and not gonna have what they need. There's gonna be disagreements and altercations, and I, I truly understand we need to figure out how to, how to deal with this, but there's already been issues along the way with, with people getting hostile toward the tenants, and this is, I just, I wanna figure out how we solve all these problems when we're trying to solve this about, you know, it's just a tough.
Well, Mr. Chairman, just to jump on with that, you're right, Commissioner Land, I mean, some of the little problems I mentioned when I was speaking to some of the folks about going to a sticker, or showing a plaque on windshield or something. Even if y'all folks have kids, and they send you gifts, and then multiple vehicles, some have a bean around, I don't wanna put this stuff in the trash. So, I mean, something maybe like that would be a little bit.
Something transferable versus, you have only five vehicles, you got two.
But I agree with Mr. Stapleton, it is a source of it, but I think, whatever we can come up with to, to better protect. Well, part of some other counties, and they're doing the same thing, they're, I mean, it's not just us. They've got the same issues we've got, people coming across the line dumping, and it's costing them a pile of money, and they, they going to stickers too, on the windshields to keep them out. I mean, it's just the way it is. Do I like it, do I wanna do it? Not necessarily, because I can see where it'd be a pain for me too. You know, I got, I've probably never been the same vehicle watching one week, so.
I get it.
Would it be crazy if we issued two, I think Mr. Harris, you said, two, to every household?
Yes, sir.
If, if they needed more.
Our number included, they included two per household, and going back to the thing hanging on the mirror, we were trying to find something that you can't just duplicate on a competition. So, the idea was to have a watermark in there that could be replicated as well.
And, and I guess to follow up, and Mr. Stapleton kinda touched on it, are we prepared, or is our staff prepared to tackle this? As they start coming in, sticker, move sticker, and.
Well, I was gonna, I, I. The simple answer is yes, that we just have to start chipping away at it a little bit at a time. Some people might slip in and jump up and down screaming, eventually I think that'll settle down. But I will tell you that we sat here a number of years ago having a conversation about cleaning up the county up and closing those walkthrough gates, so that we can eliminate some of the, where we can purge, and people just dumping their garbage all over the ground out there, and stacking fifty mattresses in front of the gates. And there were a couple commissioners, no, actually, it wasn't one that says, never gonna work, you can't close those gates. But it worked. It just took a little while. Will this work, I think, probably it will. In fact, if you had those stickers today, and I walked in here and said, I think we should do away with those, that probably gets a pushback. Because the argument would be, well, how are we gonna police this to make sure people from out of county won't come in here? Now, I'm here to do whatever the board wants to do. Is it different, is it gonna take some effort, are the people in the collection sites gonna have to work at it? Absolutely, it's gonna be different, it's gonna take a period of time for people to get used to it. But it is taking a period of time, it did, for people to get used to the hours that we're gonna open the collection sites, not having walkthrough gates either, a little better for it. I don't know if it's gonna be better with these stickers. And theoretically, we're trying to eliminate some volume that's coming in from out of county. And I, in fact, we received one of those letters, from one of the other counties that's doing the same thing now, that I probably, I'd be long to sure referring to, by Commissioner Mark. So, other than doing.
I, Mr. Chairman, sir, I, I, whatever you think about the, the stickers or the painters, I, I would say this, whichever way we choose to go, I would like to see some options. I would like for the board to have them to say so on what that sticker looks like. I'd like for the people that attend, they wanna have to say so on it. I don't really have a problem, I don't think, with, if we're gonna go with a sticker, put it to be a sticker, but I don't want it to be a classic sticker. I don't want it to say the garbage on it, or trash, or whatever, I mean, it can be a nice, it's one county symbol or something, it's just a little thing in the corner that, that, that is representative of who we are, I mean, something, but I would, I just don't wanna just go print something up, start, and this will get, I would like, I would like to be able to have some say so, hey, we got five choices, this will come up with, we like this one.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that, I'm saying, I don't want, I don't want on my truck a garbage, toy thing, garbage sticker.
Well, and I think another probably prudent idea is, is once you issue those stickers, maybe you, you give thirty days for those attendants to start identifying those people that's coming in without those stickers, and start addressing them, and letting them know, you know, on this date, if you ain't got a sticker, you're not, you're not getting them.
We're starting to get large-sized signs and posters at the gates that permits are gonna be required by, by date of serving.
Yeah, I mean, and then they can start addressing those issues ahead of time, where they don't have to be so confrontational on it, you know, they can just start warning them.
Right.
I think putting the signs up, up at the entrance is gonna probably, I mean, fifty percent of the people.
To elaborate, I mean, I agree with Mr. Stapleton, I don't want to ask any of our attendants to become, to, to, to take any type of treatment that they don't deserve, I mean, if we ask the folks out there, you just, they're just gonna be nasty. And I would tell that, I'd ask that attendant, hey, you know what, just let him dump his garbage, but you get his tag number, and we'll have our Mr. Lovely Sheriff go pay him a visit and note it, and let him party, man, but, uh, not a confrontational type of approach, I don't.
I just wanna have a plan in place for, for those folks, I mean, it'd be simplest, bring all those folks in, counter that, have them eat with them, say this, this is, you know, what was on the door, this tablet, want you to handle it. Hey, be, see, I just don't wanna leave them out there and let it throw up to the wolves and.
By their police, bribe it up, it's all. Yes, sir.
Mr. Perkins.
Yes, sir.
Name of the dress for the record.
It's Maury's Perkins, I will type it every new I go forward. Everybody that goes in here has a driver's license. So why don't we just use a driver's license, you know they don't care, they don't, they probably have the capacity to produce stickers, and they produce stickers, you know, you got driver's license, sure you're not in this twenty county. And we use that as a duplication as a relative here, for nothing tracks.
It's gonna take more time, very likely. Something that's visible on windshield or on vehicle, is gonna probably move the track through easier, it'll be more visible, than checking driver, people get pretty hostile when you ask for the driver's licenses on a collection site. And we have to train our people now to deal with hostile situations, exactly the way you've got the sheriff's department, that's what you do, even without stickers, there's some people that get upset. When they pull up in a semi, on one kind of road, it's something that they swear is residential service, maybe they're siblings.
Yeah, they'd save the money if you don't have the, the, and, and everybody have the content of your drive, and show you driver's license, and if you don't know.
I, that's a good idea, I wouldn't have a problem with it, but I'm, I'm kinda leaning towards Mr. Harris, you just want something you can see on that windshield, and just move them on through, you know, so you ain't gotta deal with them on first of November.
Everyone, Commissioner already said it, that, you know, if they drive a different vehicle, you know, somebody borrows, man, that's a vehicle with a sticker over it, so.
Yeah, I'm just, I don't, I don't believe that there's a good answer to that one right there.
So, you got some, oh, they drive, they have driver's license, but they get a different car, you know, every, every car, something's different. As they, as they would say, they, they have multiple vehicles, so I guess you give one to every, every given yard, you know? Kids got vehicles, mom and dad got vehicles, you know, you don't definitely one person to dump trash out, everybody dump trash out at some point, so, they have a green, green tag there in the vehicle.
Well, I, it is, you're, you're gonna have to train the customer, that's what's gonna have to happen there, I mean, it's just, it's gonna take some time, and yeah, there's gonna be some feedback on it, I'm sure of that, and I'm sure there probably gonna be some confrontations on it. There's no doubt, people, there's some people that it's just unreasonable. Sure, but that's rain, but, I mean, I get where you're coming from, and I, you know? Does the driver's license have what county you're on?
Well, the only, Mr. Chairman, the only problem with the driver's license, Mr. Perkins, is like the, the city of Live Oak residents, they, the city of Live Oak does the curbside, and then they take it to the landfill, and the city of Live Oak pays the county. Whereas if a city resident has a Live Oak address, they go out to the county collection site, they're not paying that assessment because they reside, they reside inside the city limits. But they'll have a Live Oak address to go out there and dump their garbage, well, that garbage, that tonnage kinda makes it the loophole, and doesn't get, I mean, the general fund picks it up and pays for it, not, not really covered by the assessment type thing.
So, it, it would, having some type of, uh, human law, some type of thing that, maybe that the, each home wanna have, it's like a simple, they say you come by a cat, you wanna have a multiple one, you have this one thing, one item in the house, they can pick up door and pass by the attendant, so here I got a.
I got my decal on that.
That's kind of all we were thinking.
We were just worried about duplication of, unless it's something that, I mean, much of them, I don't do that, but there is some people that will, will do that.
Well, just, just to wrap my mind here. That just reminded me of that.
Thank you, sir.
Especially asking that south end on Two Forty Year Street, and in that range jets, they all have, will have a late city address on the driver's license, and actually they're supporting that. Then you got some that live in the Fayette County, has a Ranford address, so you have a little mix up there, just to kinda get your heads up on it.
They have to go, see, we would use the assessment role, you know, as the households that we go to.
Well, at some point, you just, I mean, you just gotta go with something and stick with it.
I, I have sticked it quarterback, but if I drive a different automobile, I can pull it out, put it on to the other. And I don't know whether this works.
These are static, that's the same way, it's static lane.
Take it off and stick it on, and, and, but if automobile, I'm driving in there, you never have a problem. Now, they do check it, and, and, and I wouldn't give the attendance a, a word. And they, they basically know the automobile that come in, it's, like, they, they saw my sticker so much, you know, it's made in that group. But, you know, I, I do let it look at the sticker, and, and, yeah, and we have to be careful about that too, you know? Because whatever year it is, it will have run out, if it run out, it's just probably.
Same one every year.
Change of color every year.
I would, I mean, if I was, something like that, I would be, I'd be okay with saying like that.
The counties, well, that'd be nice, except we got quotes on one color, so we would, so it's clear, and it's got a color in there. But it doesn't matter, I mean, if you want something that looks nicer than that, we can get the quotes on two color, or three color, and.
Well, I'm just saying, from year to year, change the colors of the attendance notes, that was.
That's correct, just, just like the old inspection station.
Just like the new tags, change the color on.
Can we, can we ask, can we all agree to just ask Stat, Mr. Harris, to give us a couple options, and, uh, maybe a, a sta, a static, a static sticker option, and then a, like a small, you know, file type, this, this one, this one calls the X, this one calls Y, here's a one color, here's a two color, and kinda give us some options.
We'll see if they can send us some samples, if they will do that. But otherwise, we'll, we'll give the options on a number of colors, and then we'll do it. We had a quote on one color.
We might probably give us, I mean, I'm sure that the five of us will get some feedback from the public between now and then as well, what they. We might probably give us, I mean, I'm sure that the five of us will get some feedback from the public between now and then as well, what they may or may not like.
Mr. Harris, please.
Um, when, Mr. Harris, when you get those signs made up, this will go to the site that says about enforcement, please put Commissioner Lance's number at the bottom. He handles all of our issues that we have with this, the driving sites. We're, we're gonna, we're having nomination process tonight.
I think I'm, I'm used to being the board with you.
So, what, what, I will have a, do we need a motion here to approve this?
Well, for now, if you want, because I'm gonna see if we can get some samples, and I'll come back here, so we don't need to do anything right now. I mean, we've kept getting quotes from lots of companies on the stickers in the mail. Um, we'll see if we can get some samples, something that you can look at and give you an idea.
Would you all like to get a sample like this? Or just, Mr. Harris, can you get us a sample like this and just take, obviously take Live Oak, I guess, out of the center, because we have diverse towns in Swan County. We don't need that part, but.
You're talking about using the county seat?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay.
Um, anybody else have any ideas? This is just what we're talking about, basically this, just a little small.
And the, and the one that wanna speak?
Yes, sir.
I'm supposed to be the quiet one, as in talking.
Name, name and address, please.
Uh, Trisha Peterson, three zero six, actually, don't live there anymore, we just moved out of Gusteck, but I don't know what her. Three zero six Mary Max Street, Southeast Level, Florida. Um, honestly, my opinion is, if you want something that's gonna really represent the county, and a good way to get, it's something pretty, is to ask the high school. Uh, the arts program at the high school, we have some very talented students there, who are really good artists, who could design something unique, and you could continue to do that every year. Asking, okay, give us your best options from the artists that you have at the school. Gives the chance for the high schoolers to get involved in local government, and it gives you a chance to come up with something original, pretty, and good for the county. And, and anything can change every single year, 'cause you always have new students with new ideas.
Thank you. Make your input. Yes, sir.
Very cool. Good idea. Absolutely. Keep it to two colors. You know, they're designed, so it's not so costly.
So, we're just conceding right down to you.
I'm just gonna bring this, see if I can get some samples.
Yeah, bring, bring back.
Well, what type of something do you have, bring back?
Did anybody else wanna speak on the, the garbage stickers while we're here? Anybody?
Don't change your phone number.
Yeah, we got a burner phone. All right, I'm moving on aisle fourteen, or aisle thirteen, sorry. Discussing possible board action and advertising request for qualifications for building inspections, Commissioner Harris, I mean, sorry, but there.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I, I believe that our building officials done a good job, and I know that he's got some help from some other counties, and we're very thankful for that. I was contacted, though, by an engineering firm that offers, um, not only building inspection services, but plan review services. They have, actually have the licensed personnel on their staff, um, to offer those types of services. They said, if we get to a point where, where in the situation we need help, they'd be more than happy to handle that for us. So, I come to you to say that we can only procure those services through an engineering firm, and advertise an RFQ for that purpose. We may never need those services, but if you want to entertain that as a possibility, um, you can authorize us to advertise that, and we'll go through the process. Ultimately, bring the company back to you if you make this selection, and then we would negotiate rates, and we'd have that mechanism in place if you need it going forward.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Herr. Um, just follow up on what Mr. Harris says, just so I'm clear on this, here, so we had a short conversation. Basically, what we got, this, it just puts a backup plan in place, but it's my understanding that Mac, Mac would be in charge of that. If he felt the need at some point in time, and he was covered up, and he said, "Hey, I need some help here," he would be the one to call, make that call.
Just be on an as needed basis. What I envision is that Mac would be the one to make that determination based on his awareness of his workload, so that's correct.
I just, and I'm in support of, of it, I mean, I, uh, you know, breaks my heart. Mr. Roy passed away, and just terrible times here, and I don't want us to have any issues where we have any delays, and all this does is just kind of a safety mechanism, but obviously up to the board's decision.
I would, I would be good with that, as long as, uh, the guys around at the building, building department, like you said, have the authority to, to get it or not get it based on their need, so, yeah, I'd be, be all that.
Mr. Chairman. Um, I would have to disagree with you two guys, unfortunately, we don't really agree on a lot of things, um, but on this particular one, I would have to disagree. Um, and my, my take on that is, is I, I believe that, uh, I've talked to, um, the building department, talked to, you know, some staff down there, and they're, they're currently as, as called up as they've ever been. And I believe our building, our building, uh, Mac is, just calling my name, Mac is, uh, on the fast track to get his certifications, hopefully by April. Um, there's no backlog right now. My concern is going with RFQ for out of town company. I mean, we're gonna expose all of our, um, local contractors here to potentially having to deal with someone they do not have a relationship with, and the next time, it could be a totally different person from the same firm that they do not know, never met, and, um, I mean, we got a well-respected department down there now, and I think that the other surrounding counties and communities have, have, have really stepped up to help us during this unfortunate time for us. And, um, I don't know that we have a problem now, and I just, I'm just opposed to going out for bid for backup plan when the need's not even there, and, and subjecting our local contractors to dealing with a firm potentially from, I don't even know where, where they're from, but the, I mean, they could be from Gainesville, they could be from Tampa, and, uh, no type of relationship, and that's their livelihood and how they make their living. I, I just think it could maybe be harmful to the relationships that, that department has built over years and years of dealing with our local builders and contractors, so I would actually oppose this.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Herr.
Uh, just hearing the conversation here, and you, Mac, you're in the room, it puts you on the spot, but I mean, I think you were here a few weeks ago and saying we were running a deficit, and you, and you still behind, and, and, and I know we had some other counties, Mr. Roy and all those, and, 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 and that.
No, sir, we're, we're actually right now, as far as plan review, the state says that we have thirty days for residential plan review. Right now, we're within two and a half weeks. Backlog, get that. Um, I understand the purpose of an engineering firm, but, uh, like Commissioner Lance said, you do lose a certain amount of personal touch when you do that. You know, people right now know that they can contact me at the same rate, Mr. Taylor was here, you know, "Hey, do you have an idea, what time you gonna be here, I've got special circumstances, this and that." And a lot of time with your third-party services, also, you don't know who you're gonna get this time, the next time. You may get a plumbing inspector that says, "Oh, I can be here on this day of the week," and, you know, you may have three or four performance inspections following that. It is a good idea, but generally, running problems with that. I know a lot of contractors that I have spoken to that work in this county that have had that same situation come up, and other counties that basically said, "I'll never work there again, I don't have an idea of it."
So, I, I hear what you're saying, I agree, I'm, I'm just playing both sides here, but with a contractor or a house owner, builder, or buyer, be more upset that they couldn't get someone out there to get it, expect you to keep moving forward with the project? And they really, were they bothered if it was there? I know their goal is to move on to the next level, and if you had oversight of that and seen that, I think what you guys were suggesting to make that decision, that call. Ultimately, I'm not pushing either way, I'm just trying to hear both sides of the story.
Yes, sir. Ultimately, the general citizen there wants to get their project done, and I don't have to tell any one of y'all, you deal with it on a daily basis, and, uh, though, they all think their one project is the only one we got going on. So, there is a certain amount, I gotta get done, I gotta get done. Um, but ultimately, my initial thought process was, go ahead and start advertising for another inspector, like Mr. Tay- Taylor did at the time, 'cause that was already out, and if you were lucky.
Well, that was my only question, who, who's left around there that can review plans other than you and some outside help? What happens in an area where you get sick, or you can't work, or, I, I don't, I don't know what's going around, around, on around there, so that's why I'm asking that question.
Um, you're kind of, you would be at the, you'd ask the, whatever you could do, you would be in a situation, kind of like you were with, you know, with Mr. Taylor, um, calling in favors. Our local Boad chapter, which consists of Perfect County, Hamilton, Madison, Dixie, um, Columbia, we all try and help out surrounding counties. You know, we got a lot of good people, good officials, and, you know, it's like right now, even with the city of Live Oak, they've contacted Tom Johnson, I don't know, I don't remember if Mr. Johnson or Mr. Dorr. He's kind of their building official right now, but when I finish my county work at the end of the day, I'm also taking out residential inspections in the city, just there. But we, we have the resources to take care of this, I can get into it personally, even if I go out, the citizens do not go out and inspect.
And so, you don't, so you don't need to do it?
I don't, sir. I mean, I mean, that's, ultimately, that's the board's decision to make. My opinion on it, it's just something that you don't need to subject, keep this one accountable to. I think it's a bad idea, on personal opinion. If it's something major, the board wants to revisit in the future, so be it, but if it gets to a point where you have to, you know, call on another county, maybe I can get up to Mr. Harris. Need me to go, whatever y'all's decision may be, hire another inspector, the same routine that's done with me after I've been, we're already plugged in for it, so the models aren't in there.
Mr. Chairman.
Um, I, I just wouldn't want to be, uh, of, uh, you know, things happen, I can see where the events come, they do happen, and, uh, you can't say that, and nor can I say that, it will happen, it will not occur. But I hate to be in a situation that, that, that something, that something do happen, then that's frowned around. Some, I need inspection, uh, some in it, uh, these have drafts that we've done, I would have something in place already, we're trying to keep, trying to recreate a will, have already a plan. So, you, back to this question, you feel as if you're prepared to handle the situation that they were, you're.
Yes, sir.
As long as you know, and you have no problem on the table.
Yes, sir. Um, going back to it from, from the evening, that I actually got a call from Mr. Meeks about Patrick. That was on a Thursday night, I think. But, you know, obviously, we have a certain amount of emotional issues, we have to deal with, 'cause Patrick was so close, he's trained, but between myself and Mr. Meeks, we already made plans. What do we need to do to cover this? We're gonna make sure that all of this is still running, we're gonna make sure inspection, uh, we've got good people down there, I have ultimate faith and trust in all of them, so I guarantee it, we're gonna be fine.
And I, and I will say, y'all, y'all done a real good job of covering all the bases, and, and, uh, hats off to, for being able to get in there and, and do it, and, and thank you.
And, and you probably do this too, but I know the state's health force still seems to have a problem, but as far as getting a lot of things, I get involved in that all the time.
Yes, sir, the health department, that's, that's a whole different subject, I've actually spoken with Mr. Morgan about that, and he's had more time.
So, Mr. Harris, have, have, did we have a plan to advertise for another building inspector, or?
Or? Yeah, we, we can go ahead and do that, that, that isn't what this was about.
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm saying.
Let me explain something briefly. If it's the board we're doing this, there is no retainer, we're not paying anyone anything, unless I would pick up the phone and call and say, "Hey, I've got way too much here, I need help that next day too." Now, to make eliminate that decision, not, not me, not the county commissioners, you would get the phone calls from the contractors and people who are upset because something isn't happening, in that particular case, if that were to occur. I believe they're on top of it today. I'm convinced of it. I'm Mac's biggest fan right now, and the building department, they're doing a great job. Building contractors don't think like that, when they need inspections because they're trying to pour concrete tomorrow, or they're trying to get shingles put on, they need a dry inspection, they gotta schedule another inspection, they're hustling, trying to get a customer in. Um, so, in the rare, rarest of possibilities, that the building department needed assistance, or one of these other building officials that helps out in another county and has a, a campusitis attack and can't come help out, or whatever. Mac can pick up the telephone and say, "I need this to be handled the next day, the next two days, or I just need these three to be handled here." And we've got a mechanism in place so that he can make that decision, and it can be done, and we would pay only on as needed basis, basis if that were to occur. So, that was the reason this was placed on the agenda. Um, now, in the alternative, if everything is covered, nothing's ever gonna happen, then we're in great shape.
Mr. Herr.
Mac, I appreciate everything you do, and I think I gave you courtesy of calling you and told you I found out, I, I told, find out exactly what was going on, and just like I called you back, and also I made clear that you're the one in charge of this. This is nothing more than a safety net, this is bigger than you, your department, this board. We got businesses coming in here, we got truly coming in here that's gonna deal with millions, it's worth it, hopefully. I don't want our residents to suffer from a big project that we got going on, that with that big project, those folks are used to dealing with anyone around the state or other states, that you could pick up the phone and say, "Hey, this company, I need you to go take care of, of this big project we got going on the next days, where I can take care of these residents and these local contractors to stay on top of it." That's, I just want you to know my position, this is nothing about undermining Mac, or, or him not doing his job, or thinking anything can come about, this is, this is a safety net for you. And I feel like taking it the wrong way, and I don't want you to do that.
No, 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 no.
Uh, I don't, I, I want, I want something in place where you got more than what you need, and, and maybe we only need this in place, or, I mean, it's up to the board, but maybe we'll need some place until we get that other person that we're gonna hire, that'll be fine. And it comes in, and it's under you, and they're working with you, and then, but I personally, as Commissioner, with the obligations that I feel like we have at the Catalyst side, and this big company, and what we got going on at, at one thirty-six, I would feel better as a county, i- if we have that extra tool in the toolbox, you know, I understand you, you presented your side of the word, you don't think it's important, but I, I do want to present my side of the body, I do think it's important.
Yes, sir.
And I wanna say this too, also, no disrespect to you, I, I said I'd come down and sit down and talk to you at some point in time, but I haven't yet, but in the near future, I will be, but my thing is, is that you'll make that call. You'll make that call, whether it's just a safety net, I think if it's been presented, presented, it would be your call if, if we know we got two days.
Yes, sir.
And you can say, I, you have that, right, you have that option, which is your call, not this board call, you are in charge of everything. I think that, that, you have, as a great safety net, I think that would be more beneficial, I think, if you want.
First of all, I, I'm just, you know, here, I'm glad we got the conversation going, just here, all the comments being made, I mean, I don't have a problem having it there as that safety net, if, if you can see, uh, until we fill that spot, if that's something easy, easy. Is it just a consensus to do something like this, and is that all we're looking for here?
All, all it is, the board authorized me to advertise the RFQ ultimately, which all comes back to. And I'm just gonna tell you, we can do it, advertise that position anyway, but we would advertise if we go through the RFQ process, then get ranked, then come back here, uh, with that information from the board, and we'd have process, then go, come back to the rates, if the board consider, and then we would enter into agreement, and it would be on as needed basis.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Herr.
Um, I mean, I, I still strongly endorse this, and, and.
Um, I mean, I still strongly endorse this and, and I'm still where I was at earlier. I think, I think that we're, what this board's sending, sending the message to Mac is that, hey, you've been there for a month now. We're not quite sure that we got 100% faith in you, so we're gonna set up a Plan B real quick where we've never had a Plan B like this. But we're gonna get the Plan B and we're gonna let you run it. And you're gonna make that call, but we're not sold on you yet, so we're gonna make sure we got this in place. We were sold on our other guy, unfortunately, he's not here. But now all of a sudden, with a somewhat of a slowing economy, we need a, we need a, we need a Plan B. I disagree with that. I said we give our guy a chance. We got a slowing economy, I stand behind him 110%. We give him the support staff by hiring another physician. He's, he's in an association with a brotherhood of other inspectors. They've picked up the, the, the ton and helped out during absences with Mr. Taylor and even when our guys are overwhelmed. It could give him and his staff an opportunity to repay those debts that our county owes those folks. Columbia County for coming over, Hamilton County for coming over. And not, not reach out to the private sector and tell this guy, hey, man, we love you, but we need a Plan B. I mean, I'm, you gotta fail me before I need a Plan B. And I mean, I oppose it. If the board so chooses, I'm just one guy down here kicking, I don't need all my problems.
Mr. Chairman? I don't understand why you call it Plan B. It's, it'd be Plan B if it was not Mac's decision and he wasn't in control-
We've never had a safety net. Why do we need one today? That's my, that's, that's-
Oh, because we lost a valuable employee.
Exactly, and this guy is doing everything he can.
Absolutely, but we need somebody else, we need somebody else to assist him.
Hiring somebody and let, give him an opportunity. That's all I mean.
I'm not gonna argue, I'm just gonna move forward, but do we need a consensus or do we need a motion?
I think you said a consensus, and that's what I was saying, that's just until Mac can find someone. And I honestly thank you, I was gonna ask about picking up help in the city, I appreciate you doing that.
Wayne Hanfield, 1183, 138. Spent 48 years of my life doing construction. To hear the plans get turned around in two and a half weeks is phenomenal. And I've never been in the building department, other than you, that your plans got turned around in two and a half weeks. It's gonna have to months if you're going. I would sit, and every time I see an academy bringing in an outside contractor, things got slower, things got aggravated with contractors. It did not work, and most of those counties, actually, all those counties that are working, turned around and said, we're not doing this. Average hours for someone else, you have a slot that's open, average hours.
I'm a term with, uh, building here. The building contractor, public contractor here, it is, uh, speaking of the contractors, we have experienced that with these outside firms. And they have been able to do it. Uh, to have it, especially when it gets slowed up, uh, maybe you would get turned around, you would pass along. Just playing on it, that's, uh... And what, what Mac said, that we're seeing there is also that there's no cost in those guys' companies. Our building owners, Hamilton County, Gainesville, Inspector O'Leary, Madison, Bay City, all that I know. They all, they all know they're their contractors. They all know, they all, that family's with this family. They know these processes where everybody's got problems with this package. Uh, but there's a cost here that to hire a firm, when these guys are going to do it, I don't care if one or another, they're paid to the back, uh, by having one out. This hour will come over and do Patrick, and Patrick might do him. Uh, Madison would say likewise, Troy Mogan makes it do likewise. There's no cost, no fees involved, a night and we would generate fee by hiring outside firm. Uh, I mean, all I'm saying, they have already covered, but my point is from a building inspector, me from a contractor, I just, my experience with those guys would, uh, those guys coming, you gonna have, one time you may have this guy could come up, talk another inspection, somebody that doesn't know nothing about what you're doing, and we got delayed some of the time they're doing it. Hamilton County experience where they had a problem, and we still have, that I'd be another building sponsor. So, just wanna share it.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir, from, uh... I read it and, and, uh, you know, just, just thinking. We don't have to need it, basically. My theory is, if we don't need them, we don't need them. I don't think that, that, uh, since the business have put, put down local, about business, they went, went that attention with me, just the fact that we having someone, an individual or individuals that get the job done, doesn't want to be totally getting on up. And so I'm, I'm one raised throughout my life, fifth generationist. I would rather, I'd rather see stuff that's done in-house and in-county. But by no means am I trying to strike anyone, anybody. If we can get the job done, all I, all I want is to get the job done. And I got hired in State of Florida, that's what they did. I have a job, I got elected. For the best, the best for the county to move forward. You don't have to sit there and play with our thumbs and everything. So if that would be his job, as needed, as needed, if it's needed, if it's needed. If you don't need it, then there's no, uh, nothing, nothing you can do outside firm.
Well, I think we beat this horse enough here. Do we wanna, we wanna move on with this or not? Let's just get on with it.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to close on this. We're right here at the end, we have two building contractors. One retired, one still working. Um, Mac says he's fine with it. I'll tell you, these people are their advice, and I'm fine to move on. I feel, I do feel like it's got completely blown out of proportion. I think it's almost like it's got sides up here on the board that some of us is against the county office, some of us is not. I mean, it was never intended to be that, it was intended just to do the best by Swan County that we could do. So I'm, I'm fine with, they say they can handle it, I'm perfectly fine with that. All the thing I'd ask Mac, if he sees any issues, people come to us and there's, we can be of assistance. I don't, I don't want to have on, that's fair.
There is, uh, we done discussed this. One thing I'd add to it, Chairman, you, I think you spoke about it, or Mr. Chairman, you said you guys are already advertising for it?
No, 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 no. Oh, no, yes, get a position, not for this.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Yeah, for the position, yes, we plan to go ahead and start and unfold it.
Okay, just make that clear, that's all. Do you need a consensus or do you need a motion for this? Or we don't, we're just, we're not doing anything?
No action.
Good deal. Item number 14, discuss with possible board action, contracted roadside litter pickup.
You know, it's interesting, this time of year, um, the weather does something for us that we don't get to appreciate as much the other time of year. It makes that grass just like on flat, where you can see all the dirt on the side of the road. And everyone starts getting calls. So, we had, last year, about this time, we had gone off the bid for roadside litter pickup and came right down to 12 hours, and well, and we did that because, um, if you remember, the prison wasn't releasing inmates. So we didn't have the inmate help we needed for our inmate crew to go around pick up garbage. But when we got right down to 12 hours, they started releasing inmates. So we were able to get garbage picked up. Well, recently, we've had fewer inmates in some cases, but we're still receiving some inmates. We just don't have enough. But that grass is flat again and the garbage is standing straight up. In fact, I talked to, I think it was Commissioner White, about asking these fast food restaurants to start downloading paper green. Because we wouldn't see as much of it then. But what we did was, um, we went ahead and started contacting the company because we never entered into contract with them when we started getting inmates. We contacted them to see if they would stand behind the numbers that they had bid last year. And we've tried about 50 times. We are convinced that that company is no longer in existence. So my question today is, would you like for us to start the bid process over again for roadside litter pickup? One thing that I have done is contacted sheriff, see if he can round up some inmates that could be released to work with some of our crews. But right now, we've got about six inmates that we're receiving on a regular basis from the prison. Um, I'd like to have four crews of six. But right now, we're getting about six inmates and we need more. So I just want to have the conversation. If you want to go through the bid process again, we can do that.
Well, you said you talked to the sheriff about this?
Yes, and he's gonna get back with me, he said.
He's turning that week loose as it is.
Do, uh?
Spent a lot of weeks as it is.
Do what?
Said he's turning one, one loose a week as it is.
That's right. Yeah, we've got GPS units on those.
I just want the garbage picked up. I mean, I'm tired of hearing it.
I agree, everyone wants garbage picked up. Um, so I'm gonna give the sheriff an opportunity to see if he can get me some additional inmates. But, uh, we are receiving some, we just don't have enough. We're receiving some from the prison right now. But our average right now is about six, and that just isn't enough.
A day, six a day?
Yes, sir.
There's a lot of garbage out there right now. I mean, I know it's because everything is dead and you can see it all, but it's, it's pretty rough.
It should this time of year, at least for another two months.
Well, and you know, I don't like it either, I don't like to see it, you know? I go, I go pick it up on our road all the time, but-
Or things have to start moldering, and then it's gonna look really, really empty.
That is, but, you know, whatever we gotta do there, I mean, if we can get some inmates to do it, that's great. If we can't, let us hire somebody. I just want to pick it up, you know, I don't know what rest of y'all think about it, but I just want to get the job done.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
Did we have some, I thought you had in place that you were gonna, we were gonna hire a crew or someone to pick up trash before they move it?
Well, that's, yeah, that's what we did last year. We had bid the service, but we weren't receiving any inmates at the time. And about the time we were gonna start turning them loose is when we started getting inmates. So we had enough inmates, we started getting everything caught back up. But now, we don't have as many inmates and this company apparently isn't in business any longer.
What about, what about some part-time people? I mean, we budgeted, what, $200 and something thousand for that, that garbage pickup contract?
I was thinking it was more than that, but I-
I've been, but I'm just saying, we got some money sitting there.
What I had done before we did, if you, just to refresh your memory-
And haulers and trailers and-
That's right, and I had run the numbers at the time on what it would cost us to do that. And I don't mind bringing that information back if you want to take a look at that and make a decision.
I just think we need something consistent. I mean, this, we do it today, we can't do it tomorrow. I mean, I just want to see some consistency in it.
That's, well, honestly, in my opinion, they, they should be out there every day that those tractors are moving, for sure ahead of them when the grass is growing. But this time of year, we shouldn't have grass everywhere. If we had people. And again, I go back, that's the information I brought you before on the equipment and the personnel. If we had those people right now, we would still need inmates. I mean, you can pick trash up today for five miles. And tomorrow, you wouldn't know that you had picked it up the day before. That's how bad it is, people just-
Trash.
Seventy-five miles an hour on our little two-lane roads with all the trash flying everywhere. It's sad.
Sure. Well, I saw a crew out of 136 West yesterday, they were picking up three or four, and they were picking up trash and garbage and pounding it up. But, uh, I would prefer if we go in and do what, you know, what we were talking about doing last year, bring back the boys over, bring in a high, and upon a clean road also. And actually deliver all the place and the grass growing up, and then we do more paper everywhere. And the cars are taking it down the road, somebody else is going.
Sure.
Yeah, the, yeah, just, well, we're trying to talk about consistency of things that, you know, with our inmates is, you know, they're, you know, then they come and go, you know? We could have, you know, a real good trustee, you know, and then he gets his time, and then he's gone, then we gotta hunt another one. But, uh, but Mr. Harris called me this afternoon and I checked with our captain of jail, and she's gonna do some checking to see what we have available. You know, the problem that we have is, you know, they got very, um, meets our service stipulations, you know, getting our trustee just like, uh, Mr. Land, we had a couple that didn't want, in like our hospitality and took off on us, so we gotta be real careful of that. So here again, it's, it's, you know, we're gonna do what we can to get someone out there, but it's hard to say how many we can, can get, would you get them, how long they gonna stay there? So it's hard, you know, as far as how long they can stay is, it's gonna be a, you know, kind of a guessing game. But we'll do what we can, but it's not, it's, here again, it's just hard to, hard to say what we can and can't do until we look at them and how long, how long they gonna stay with us.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, Mr. President.
I was, Mr. Harris, we, we can't, uh, with y'all, some of them day labor contracted people and use some help like that for a little bit? Just send one of our vans to go get loaded up and, and get busy?
We can do whatever the board wants us to do.
I don't know where else you're gonna give it, but it's about time that you-
I get it, I, I've tried it though in my business, and they will come and work a day and that's it. And they won't get laid every day, and it's, so it's a problem.
I, and I agree, I can contract her up, I can get a different one every day, and won't get back up the next day. I don't know.
Back in the day, you could do that, and you, it was fine, but they, I'm telling you, I've tried that multiple times. And, uh-
Can we, I know it's kind of a time sensitive thing, but could you get that information that we talked about before? And also maybe like Mr. Stifson suggested, just reach out, uh, agency that has day labors? Just give us a few options to discuss, I guess.
We can contact the companies that have the day labors, they're just gonna give us prices.
That's what I'm-
Well, what Commissioner White is talking about is what happens when they show up or don't show up. And I can't disagree with that, I mean, I've dealt with that before. But I don't mind calling and we can get rates for you. We can certainly do that. The other option was to, uh, we could bid it again. Those numbers were high numbers, and that wasn't probably service year-round like you would expect. But, you know, we can gather information and bring this off this back here.
And those folks are probably facing the same thing we're talking about. So, have them.
Really, can you, uh?
Yeah. I don't know. Need a machine we can run down through there and pick it up with, like a vacuum or something?
That'd be great.
Low health requiring.
Mr. Chairman, how much, was it two or two fifty you put in the budget for that crew that we wanted to?
It's somewhere in $200, I can't remember now what we did. But I noticed I was seeing it down.
Um, Mr. Harris, do you remember that number on the equipment and purchase and hiring some guys?
No, sir, I sure don't.
I mean, I was against the hiring full-time employees, or what, at the time was a temporary problem. But, and we got, we got, it's bad.
Well, and I, I think, you know, we've been talking about the door-to-door pickup on the garbage, and I get all that's probably gonna change some of that. Because if you ever go to the door-to-door pickup, they're not gonna be hauling it up and down the road, loading it out the truck.
Right.
So I believe that's gonna decrease that a lot, if it, when and if it ever happens, but that would solve some of the issue, but I, you know, I don't know.
You're gonna shut down drive-throughs if you want to stop, probably stop my house.
Yeah. Yeah, you go to any intersection in the county and within 300 yards approaching that intersection or leaving that intersection, it just looks like all the fast food restaurants in the county are under the same.
Mr. Chairman? Richard Lynn?
Mr. Harris?
What about, um, can we do this?
Can we, uh, um, can we contact FDOT and say, hey, who's your, who are your contractors doing in Swan County? And say, hey, I don't know who they are, ABC companies, and say, hey, do y'all have any extra capacity in Swan County since your guys are there and your equipment's already there? And what we, I mean, I know we have to go to a bid, but say, hey, but could we give FD, could we piggyback through? And that's a private question, can we piggyback?
But I think we're screwing FDOT. We could piggyback, piggyback with the problem. Um, and I don't mind reaching out to FDOT and talking to them. I mean, that's a great idea. I certainly don't mind having that conversation.
Just say, hey, who's doing like 51, 129, one, all the state roads? And who's doing the 90s? Who's doing those in Swan County? And can we reach out to them and see if they have any extra capacity? Who's doing those in Swan County? And can we reach out to them and see if they have any extra capacity, and so how do we hire them?
I think the problem with that is, is why nobody bids it is because when most, when they mow, when they pick up before they mow, they pick up because it's a necessity. That they don't make any money on that pickup. They make money on that tractor running down through there. But, I mean, I don't have a problem trying to just ask the question totally. Maybe it's just down through here on one twenty-nine. I don't know the company.
Well, maybe if you get them in the same rotation, you know, where they're already here and they got the time to do it, you know, maybe they don't. I mean, I'm sure they're gonna charge more than they're gonna charge the guy mowing, but that is the mowing contractors people, I think, that's who it, right? So, I don't know, it's worth a shot. I, I, I'd like to see a few options myself, you know?
I'm gonna ask you, bring us some, have the affirmation on, on.
Either our own people or another contractor. I mean, if you want to do another request, you know, for bids, or do a bid on it again, I'm, I'm for that too. I'd like to see all of you.
I, I certainly don't have a problem bidding again. And I was hoping that if people were still in business, but I think to be clear now that they are not.
They run out of help?
Yeah.
So, we'll deal with that.
We'll, we'll try to round some options up for you. We'll contact FDOT and Labor Force and all of this stuff.
Any chance we could have that by next meeting? I only say that because we got springtime coming in the mowers. We're gonna be rolling here another few months.
We can have some, but we won't have, uh, bids.
We won't have to get it back ourselves. But we do have some money in the budget.
But I'll have the numbers.
Last time.
Yeah, the numbers that I put together before, on the equipment personnel, if you were hiring people, I have that.
Well, I'd like to see that too.
Bring that back, and then the, the whoever the state contractors are, maybe by next meeting. So, like I said, we gotta keep money in the budget that set aside for the contractor we get hired. Or then, wow, whatever, but, I mean, maybe to go with plan A to get something moving, and then later on, find a better way to do it. If it will be it or whatever, back up and talk.
Okay. We can do that.
Is there any additional with bid items?
Yes, you have two. I'd like to hear. Are those my research notes?
I don't know. I got a little seven.
We'll, we'll bring that right to you.
I was looking. I was like, where are they going?
They're filling, um, big shoes for me.
Does everybody else have a copy?
He's gonna get some money.
Oh, you went to your school? Good. He played.
We had them. Someone forgot to hand it out.
That's Chad. He's from the end of the class.
I got my name, my friend, my friend.
I'll try to give you the summary version of this. We were all prepared to, in fact, we started the advertising on the door-to-door pickup of garbage, and then we had a conversation about a statute that requires a public hearing, so. What I'm here to ask you for is authorization to send certified notice of a public hearing to the companies that currently provide residential garbage collection services for them in Swan County. That's a statutory requirement. We have to notify them in advance. We have to do it by certified mail. And then we have to have a public hearing to talk about, um, this as an option for the county, because we, you know, we were gonna try to determine what prices were. And it was gonna be one of the options that we could consider. But even to do that, we have to go through this public notice requirement and have the, uh, public hearing. So I need authorization to do that if you want to continue to proceed with that as an option.
Any discussion on that, or a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Might try and expand. This is, like you said, the statute requirement to send those companies notification that we are entertaining this and the public hearing. You know, this is just part of the process that we gotta, we gotta do to get it.
You want to see, I believe, that's right.
Yeah, we, we gotta do it just so we can get them.
Just so we can get it on. Right. I, I would make a motion to approve additional, you know, item number one, send a certified notice for public hearing.
Uh, motion by Commissioner Land, second by Commissioner Fleming, all in approvals, we are.
Aha.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item number two, authorize a bid destruction of fire station number six, North US Highway one twenty-nine, this is carried.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, you authorized us to bid a design build for that fire station, but in the essence of time, I'm gonna ask you to just authorize us to do a standard conventional bid for that. As an alternative to what you, we agreed to in the last meeting. And the reason for that is that, um, I don't know if or when this language became a part of the design build statute, but now, uh, when I read that recently, it says that if we're gonna go that route, we have to have an engineer first to design and seal it. In order for us to advertise, to entertain the design build of a structure which would then incorporate another design at the time it takes to do that. So in my mind, that's a duplication. We'd be better off just handling it, um, with an engineer handling the design, and then going to bid, just like we do with our FDOT projects. So what I'm not doing tonight is ask to use a slick, um, or award a contract to the engineer that would come back in the next board meeting for the task order for you to entertain. But I wanted to bring this to your attention, because the statute just looks like it's somewhat, it's convoluted thing, or it just takes longer. In my mind, that should have, it could have.
You're confused. You confuse the heck out of me.
I'm, I'm with you on this one too.
I am so confused. Like, the whole statutory, the wording, design build, and we get a design and specification, but now the statute, I'm so confused. What are we doing?
Here's, here's what, let me try to explain this and simplify it a little bit, without using the whole statute language. By way of illustration, if we are building a road, okay, this can be a building, but let's say that we're building a road. I'll bring you a task order from an engineer. They say this is what we're gonna charge you to design. Everything associated with this roadway, the ditches, get your permitting and everything in place. We have fixed price, pay that engineer. We approve it, board approves it, they go design everything. When it's completed, when that design is finished, then county administration takes that bid package. It's a set of plans and a big book full of specifications, all the general specs and special specs. We will bid that out. Contractor can bid it, we'll bring those prices back, and you will award a bid. Okay? If you're doing a design build, it's better. Now, there was a time where you can do a design build where we just advertise, we establish, we could establish our minimum requirements for that structure. And we write all those up. For example, it's gonna have ten-foot walls and a drop ceiling. It's, you know, we list all of our specifications. And we may even list alternates for the exterior wall. It could be concrete block or ten-foot studs with hardy board siding or whatever. We create that, and we can do that pretty quickly. And we bid that out and say, these are our minimum requirements, but we are interested in entertaining design build responses. The contractor goes and finds his own engineer, okay? We haven't designed it at this point when we advertise it. Contractor goes, he, he partners with an engineer or an architect. And we get responses back from, say, three or four different contractors who have partnered with engineers or architects. They've included the price of the engineering and the cost of the construction all in one neat package for us. Now, there was a time when that saved time. But now, the statute says that we'd have to design the whole thing and get an engineer seal on it, and then bid it. And then they, they go partner with an engineer or something, maybe they come back with something a little bit different than what you had put together. And you entertain these options that have been offered to you. It just takes too much time. Because if you select them, then they have to do their own design and put everything together before they start building. So what I'm talking about doing is just going back to what we would typically do with the road. We go ahead and design it, we put it out to bid, everyone bids the same exact thing instead of multiple options. And when the numbers come in, the board makes the decision on working contract.
But this is the way you think of, of streamlining and maybe?
I think in this particular case, I think it's probably gonna streamline the process and get us where we need to be faster.
Mr. Chairman. I don't know either, or. Matter of being through a construction, building construction since I've been on the board, so I'm trying to clarify the process. Hope my ignorance and gets them. How do we, how do we design a building and have our staff involved, chief, to make sure that he gets everything he needs and his guys get everything they need, and like we designed it? And then we say, uh, with engineers, I get it. And then we say, this is, this is what our guys, this is what our people want, this is what we need right here. And then we give it to the, like, why, why can't we do that? And so that we don't, so that we get it right. But we get it right the first time versus somebody else bringing us, the way I understood it, this process, this recommended process with other contractors and other, with, with their engineers or architect would bring us, here's what we want to build, y'all bless it, and we'll build this for that price. That, um, that, I understood it to be like that. I, I kinda like the, hey, Eddie, Mr. Harris, y'all design it, get what you want, let's make this thing right, and then send it out to bid to whoever wants to come.
That's what this is.
Okay, well, that's what I was with. So confused.
Yeah, and no, you're right. Here's what we, here's what we do. It would be myself, and it would be the chief, whoever, or his staff. And we would sit down with the engineer, our engineer, and we've already got a list of all of our basic specs. You know, all the interior finishes and all the standard things that we tried to standardize a number of years ago. So we incorporate all those. Biggest issue right now for us is gonna be finalizing the floor plan, coming up with the the Bush Post Defector method, for example, I had already acquired about picking the bays and doing that as a red iron building, steel deli, because I think it's cheaper because of the height and the overall size. And then doing the climate control portion different. This gets us there more. We all participate. We're not entertaining the offerings from the others.
I, I just, the best way, one, I didn't understand, understand that. I understand it better now. I just wanna, I just, I'm just gonna say this. Let's, don't, don't rush this and let's mess it up or get it wrong. I wanna make sure we get it right, and it's everything that the chief needs and his staff thinks, and they've spent time doing their research for other counties, other municipalities, looking at examples, looking at floor plans, looking at whatever. Let's get it right. The, 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 I know the talks with the city and that. Slam chance that'll ever evolve, so let's don't, don't, what I'm saying is, don't, let's don't let that affect the timeline and rush it. I don't, I don't like to be nice, pretty project, we got a million bucks, let's make it great, and we're gonna build it, let's make it great, making sure that the chief's hundred percent. And I know Commissioner Hill's got a lot of time invested in it, and, I mean, I don't wanna be pretty nice, and I don't wanna get, come back and say, oh, man, we should have did this.
Those gentlemen that were earlier talking about lobbying and stuff like that, I got a small glimpse of that running back and forth to Tallahassee and the board. It was, and some of you, I think, were here at the time. I tell you, I wouldn't want to go.
Uh-uh.
I'd be, I'd be.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh-uh.
Mr. Stapleton.
Commissioner Land, you mentioned a little bit about the city. I mean, has, you got any feelings on that or?
I, I, I mean, I, I, I feel privileged that they're honored that, you know, you guys had faith in me sending me over there, but I feel like I might have been sent over there with them. I don't know that they're gonna materialize. I'm just gonna leave it at that. As you guys indicated, that road got rocky real quick. I'm just gonna leave it at that.
So, back to item number two. We're pretty much done with that.
I'm not gonna say, I'm not gonna say we're done at this date. You know, y'all can look at the agenda item, or look at the council's agenda. It hasn't been discussed there with the council. I haven't spoken to any council members. I don't know where the council members are at. The road's bumping. So, I, I shed light on that. Slow down, pump the brakes, and let's get this right. There is no competition on the table.
So, let's, let's make a. So I, I'll, I'll make a motion and you go ahead and report.
I'll second.
I'll get it put together and bring it to.
I would like the board to be able to see the plan, make sure the chief sees the plan.
We can do that, and on your next agenda, you might task order for the design.
Do you need a motion or just?
Do it, make the motion, authorize us to bid, then we will bid it. Once that design is complete, and we'll share the, uh.
Once the designs are all.
Once the designs have been completed.
It'll come back to the board where everybody's looking at, and then we'll go to bid with the.
We'll go to bid.
Contract builders.
Commissioner Hill hadn't taken much to do, I do.
Motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Stapleton, all in favor, I.
Aha.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. That was all the additional good items?
Yes.
Public, public concerns and comments are held hard enough. Mr. Revat, I skipped over you earlier. Was there anything under the?
He brought on one, that's fine.
Mr. Harris, what did you put in comments?
Uh, just quickly, I think the lobbyist idea is a great idea. I was, years ago, had the opportunity to hang out up there too much during legislation. Commissioner Hill got a good taste of it when he was up there, but a wise gentleman told me once that if you don't have feet on the ground in Tallahassee, you don't have a voice in Tallahassee. So it's a great idea if it's something the board wants.
I wanna say, didn't, didn't I bring that, you would need, you didn't, you took that one, I was thinking about this a couple of years back, it just never materialized. Something you need to discuss.
Sure.
Mr. North? Now, you want to do it now, or you wanna wait till?
I'm just, just as you were going, uh, when Mr. Grissom left a while ago, he happened to leave a contract here asking to give it to you. I mean, the five thousand dollar one, I'm ready to sign off.
He also said, is there anything that we currently have asked for in appropriations?
We have one.
As soon as you sign that, please call him and he will be on it.
We actually have, uh, commissioners, and you may or may not remember, we made a appropriations request for funding for the EOC.
Is that something we can approve tonight, or is that something we need, we gotta bring back? Mr. Revat, I'm not sure what to do there. I'm, I'd like for you to weigh in on this.
Can you do anything you please?
Well, I, I don't wanna stay out of jail. How about that?
Oh, okay. Now that you get to that, um, lobbying is, is a different thing. I really would have to go back and, and look, look on that, because it is a special service. They had it up in part of the legislature last year that they were gonna be doing away with a lot of those types of agreements, and they didn't get passed, and I've, I've gone back to, to look at it.
So we need for you to look at that first.
I mean, this is his proposal now.
Well, I understand the proposal, but timing-wise, though, too, you know, is, is one thing.
I mean, I would like to stay on our next agenda for the call.
Yeah, if you could, if you could research it. Yes, please.
That, but I would, you know, definitely, I, I had the opportunity to speak, if I may, I had the opportunity to speak to the gentleman also who was in Tallahassee, he just, uh, just knows a lot of folks. We was at a conference, kind of around a bunch of people in Tallahassee that stays in Tallahassee, and, and, and he knew them all. You know, I mean, that's, that's what it's about. It's about, it's about relationships, and not different than anything else in the world when it comes to business, about relationships, and and, uh, that's how you make things happen.
Absolutely. Mr. Harris, you want to finish up? I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, that was it. That, that was all I wanted to say.
Mr. Fleming?
I wasn't gonna say anything tonight, but, uh, I would like, I appreciate you for contacting these people, but.
Well, it wasn't just me. I mean, Land was there, I mean, Commissioner Stapleton, Mr. Norris. Well, it wasn't just me, I mean, Lynn was there, I mean, Commissioner Stapleton, Mr. Norris, you know, it was a, it was a joint effort.
Yeah, I appreciate the efforts, and the chairman, bringing up to, uh, to do a big picture of that. And like I said, I wasn't gonna say anything, but, uh, I just, I just can't hold it.
Well, let it go, bro, it's here.
I'm gonna let it go. Bobby City. I am so glad that you found out firsthand how that worked. We have, we have been beat up, aggravated, and I, I wanna, I wanna make this point. I, I, my grandson, one of my grandsons, he had a habit of jumping on the bed, jumping on the bed like a trampoline. I kept telling him, you're hurt, jump on that bed, I kept him to put the bed on. I got ready to put the bed on him this afternoon, he jumped off the bed onto the floor. And I said, did you learn your lesson? He told me, yes, sir. I think you learned your lesson. He don't, he don't.
You gonna get your legs dropped when you get done. But you know, Mr. Fleming, I agree with you and, and I, I, you know, I would only encourage ourselves and, and their board and our community. Obviously, the fire station has been a, nothing, it's just, whatever. But there's other things we can work together on to better our community, help each other out. I think we need to focus on those moving forward and the state.
And I, I wanna end this and, you know, we're working with a great group.
That's right.
Commissioner, I appreciate every one of you guys and staff. Yeah, 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 we, we have to work together and stay, brother, and then to get things done. Thank you, Mr..
Thank you.
Mr. Stapleton?
Well, that's done, all of them. Um, I just, you gonna be with him about ten minutes? I, I, I've learned, I don't, I don't think, I don't think you did anymore. Um, serious, I'm a serious note, though, with the city. I, we're talking about this, we, we know it's a stretch trying to do things. Um, I made clear mention before, it's big personalities on their side and our side, been for years, departments, it, it doesn't matter. It's just, uh, it, it takes time. I, I would like to, to ask all of you just to keep open mind and let's, you know, try to continue to do small, small baby steps. I mean, um, I will commend Commissioner Lynn for jumping off. I mean, he, he, he found a big elevator he could find and went after him depending. And, uh, but, you know, we, we talked about these roads and I would, I would like to try to begin there and see if we should do some things and, and, uh, continue to build bridges. I know it's tough, uh, when you're kinda running to something head on like that and it doesn't always work. But, uh, just, just gotta, just gotta keep working at it, dude. And, uh, that's the main thing with, with the positions that we're in is, uh, you're gonna get a lot of roadblocks and you just have to keep, keep working and keep pushing and try to get through them. Uh, only thing other than that is, I would just like to keep Roy Rogers' family in prayers, uh, just, just a great person, uh, for this service and Jasper, just, just beautiful service. And I just hate it for his family, just wanna keep them in prayers. Also, a very young Mandy, just has to keep thinking about her and slow healing process that she's just trying to get through. And, and then we all going back to, we have the paperwork like we're supposed to, she's seriously. She has kind of done all that. Nah, I'm just kidding, you know, we, we, we want her to, uh.
Sheriff's getting poked, uh, I mean, all getting, everybody's getting damned.
But that's, that's all the guy, just keep those folks in prayers and keep praying for healing and, and, um, let's just move forward and do what best we can do.
Chief?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to add to some of the talks that, you know, was going on by the, the city county fire bureau. Uh, I had a, a pretty good conversation with Chief Croft yesterday, um, and we spoke at length and, you know, and I, I told him, maybe I wanna make sure that none of this politics have been here this. Takes away from, you know, the relationship to trying to rebuild, working with them. So, I do have, uh, a county attorney just approved our side of an automatic agreement. We're waiting on the, you know, the legal on their side to take a look at it and make sure all of the terms are good with them. So, um, we're gonna continue, we're gonna work with, with each other to help each other and whatever best for the community. And as soon as it gets approved on their side and they're good with it, I'll be bringing it before you guys to sign that agreement. So, we can actually have automatic aid from them and, and.
We have a screen.
And we have a structure fire, but it will automatically be paid for their buyers, it'll automatically be paid to ours within five geographic area.
Actually, I'm so glad, I actually had a phone call and conversation with someone.
So, we're, I wanted to make sure that none of the, of any of the politic stuff that went on, that Chad and I can keep working, trying to work and repair that relationship and keep moving forward on, on, at least on that.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Mr. William?
Thanks, chief. Um, yeah, I mean, there's no disrespect, nobody over at the city has been disrespectful. Don't, don't, don't want anybody to leave here with that, uh, the road got rocky quick, but it was total utmost respect in the conversation and dealing with those guys. You know, if, if nothing else, I mean, we got an automatic chief stepped up and, and got with their chief Croft. And we got a automatic aid agreement that hopefully will be in place after their review and, and, I mean, so we, we had planned a few punches to, to get something done. I mean, it, it, it's baby steps like Commissioner Stapleton said, um, you know, nothing great is ever achieved easily. So, just, just keep back into building relationships over there and, and moving forward. And again, I, you know, second what he said about keeping Mr. Rogers, uh, in his family and, and Mandy and her family, Taylor family too, and others, that's all it's about, once. That's it.
Make sure it's true. Just let it go, everyone's, you know, important here this evening and a great meeting. Commissioner Lynn, I'm gonna poke and fun at everybody, I'm gonna poke fun at myself. I got one more hole in this belt I'm wearing, so then we can think of, I'll give it to Mr. Fleming. Where are you at?
I hope it lasts at least three more years.
Hey, I will say now, we got us one, if we come up with another follow-up, we'll put him on it, 'cause he'll take it, he'll take it, give it a shot anyway.
You gotta appreciate that more so.
I just wanna ask, what is that what I say? If you're gonna be done, you gotta be done.
Well, uh, I thought it was a good meeting, uh, appreciate everybody working together, Commissioner Lynn, appreciate you working on the fire plan, I know you put a lot of time into it. One day, you'll probably all come to fruition, it's just not gonna be today.
But, uh, you know, to interrupt you, but I wanna say thank you to you and, and, uh, I heard about your negotiations with these folks from Tallahassee, all went back in swans. So, I commend you on your negotiations.
Well, that's why, you know, when rednecks go to town, bury all. But, uh.
But seriously.
Uh, my pleasure, actually. But, uh, yeah, Jimmy and I went to the, uh, F P L conference down at, uh, Daytona Monday and Tuesday of last weekend. It, it goes back to the same thing and that's why I'm pushing so hard for this, for these kind of people to help us. Not saying that our staff is not doing a great job, they do, uh, not, not priding them at all. I just, I know there's a lot of money coming down and I know it's coming down quick and, uh, I just wanna try to be in front of it. And, uh, that's, that's why I was pushing for that so hard. And like I was saying, we went to that F P L conference and every one of those guys, there's, there'll be a lot of, uh, high-powered consultants there that's, uh, that's pushing to put businesses in certain places and, and the first thing they're gonna, they tell you, every one of them will tell you, is if you ain't got the infrastructure, it ain't happening. And so, that's, that's where I'm coming from and that's why I'm pushing so hard. Plus, I know the money's gonna, gonna be there and I just wanna optimize every yard road we can get. I also wanna just pray for Rogers' family, for Mandy's family and, uh, and anybody else that's, that's lost and love them and, and is suffering. I appreciate all of y'all and with that, I just need a motion adjourned. Motion by Commissioner Stapleton, second by Commissioner Hale, all in favor, aye? All opposed, same sign.